I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that the next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, July 24th at 9:00 a.m. right here in the community center. This is a good time to silence your cellphones if you didn't. And I brought this to remind me that please hydrate today. We've got a heat advisory. Everybody should stay hydrated and in good condition. We'll go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Chrissy? Public? Is there any public comment on the minutes? Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. And Tanya, any add-on items?
None.
Any petitions and communications?
Yes, we have one from Mr. Portetto.
Okay. And I understand there's been some action on that?
Yes.
Correct, yes. I had a research, after reviewing the letter, I researched the district's minimum maintenance standards, what we have the ability to enforce. The only thing that we have the ability to enforce is underbrush growth on lots that have been previously cleared. I contacted Highlands County Code Enforcement about the issue of dead trees. Highlands County Code Enforcement said that they review dead or dying trees if they are a hazard or potential hazard to any nearby residences, but since they have a minor staff, they farm that work out to local tree services. They gave me the number of a Revel tree service, which I contacted. Mr. Revel went out to the lots at issue and inspected both of them and stated that there was no potentially dangerous trees to any nearby residences. I'm not sure if he'll file a report with the county, but there was a case number opened. That case number was CE20060227. So there is an active code enforcement, Highlands County Code Enforcement case that is the method that must be used in order to, you know, take care of dead, dying tree issues because the district does not have the ability to address those issues. Mr. Revel did say that the, any homeowner has the ability to trim any limbs that cross into their, over their property line. They can't cut down a tree that's on somebody else's property, but if those, the tree's limbs cross over the property line, those can be trimmed.
Okay, and has this been relayed to the Portetos?
It just, I believe it just has been.
And any comments from the Portetos?
Is that right?
Yep.
Larry Portetto. I, it was pretty muffled. I didn't get most of the conversation of the esteemed attorney. I'd like to read something to you. It's called, it's by Sun and Lake. It's called Code Enforcement and Security. The Division of Security and Code Enforcement seeks to enhance neighborhoods and residents for health, security, safety, and general welfare through an efficient and effective co- security and code enforcement program. That's that. The other thing I have, which was put out by the county, and it stated about vegetation, dry vegetation, should be 30 feet away from your home. Mine is 19 feet from my home. We talked about dead trees, and it's, according to what I've looked at on the internet, dead trees attract lightning and becomes a fire hazard. I would like to see what you can do to protect our property. Across the street, it appears that, I don't know what Mr. Schumacher had to say, but I'm interested in protecting our house and our property and the people and the land across the street, which is a fire hazard. As a matter of fact, on the 23rd, my wife took this letter to Ms. Kennedy and to put it on the agenda. That evening, if you read the paper this morning, there was a fire in Sun and Lake next door to a house. I think we've got some serious problems. Over the years, you've cut down the trees. Now someone's going to say, "Yeah, we got the rules and they're yada, yada, yada." But since those rules were made up, things have changed. 20 years ago, we did not have all the dead trees, pine trees. And that's witnessed by the fact that between hole number nine and 18, all those dead trees are gone. So I want to know what the district, what you're going to do. And the lightning the other night between our house and Pam Drode's house, that's where the lightning struck, shook our house, which is not your fault of the district, but then when we went out and looked outside, there were all the brush from, or dead trees were put in our yard. We had, we had this dry vegetation there within 19 feet of our house. So I think we've got a serious problem. And now you might say, "Well, that's going to cost us a lot of money to do that." Well, you spent $1 million revising that restaurant, which is going to lose money. So maybe money could be sent to some of the homeowners or some of the areas to help us so we don't have that problem. As a matter of fact, many years ago, I wrote a letter and I wanted to clean up. My, I can't find it, probably 19, 18 years old. And I requested that any lot adjacent to, next door to, yada, 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 to existing home be cleared so there would be no damage to the house. Well, that did not pass. No one cared about that because we are interested in selling lots. So I want to know what we're going to do. Mike, you have, you went out and I believe you inspected what is around there. And could you elaborate on what you saw? Am I lying in what I'm talking about?
You're absolutely right. We have the problem through all Sun and Lake with the same, with vacant lots that are but a, a home lot, somebody has a home on it, and all the growths from the vacant lot do grow into homeowners. And Larry isn't the first person that's come to us. We've probably had 30 or 40 over the years. Neil, I think you have the same problem back at your house that the stuff's growing into. I have the same on my, my problem. It's going to be very costly. And Larry's right. It is a 30-foot buffer and it is about 19, 20 feet from it now, but it's a private homeowner. So we, so we don't go on private homeowners lots and, and clear it. And since day one, since I've been here 10 years, I've always been having about, do not go, you know,
trespassing.
I mean, the work, the work involved is going to be unbelievable, but it's happening, right? And I mean, I clean on the side of mine, but I'm a lot younger than, than a lot of people. So I'm lucky until probably next year, but anyways. But it is a problem. It's absolutely a problem.
Okay, now, I understand from what council reported that it's a county code enforcement issue. It's not something that the district can go onto the private property and address.
Correct. The only thing that the district has the power to address is lots that have been previously cleared and then are allowed to grow back, you know, in excess. That is the only thing the district has the ability to address. Everything else is counting.
And the problem with that is, Neil, is, is what Larry's talking about, from what I'm being told, is there were, like, a lot across the street from him was cleared in the past, but not completely cleared. So, so somebody went in there and cut certain areas out and cleared it, but didn't take out the big trees. I mean, right now, he's got a big tree right across from his house that's dead, and it's in that lot. But that was, they didn't clear the lot completely. They didn't, when you go in to build a home, you go in there and completely strip it. That was not done there.
Okay, let me, let me try to get some clarification because you said the tree was dead and county council, or, I mean, our council indicated that Revel, who inspected the property, said there was no risk.
He said there were dead trees, but they did not pose a risk to any nearby structures.
Okay.
And, and that's what Larry has a problem with. It is dead. And he is right. Lightning, dead trees are, if lightning, I mean, lightning will find dead trees, so.
Okay. The, I guess the other question that this raises is if the county is saying we need a 30-foot clearance and we have a number of vacant lots that aren't cleared, do we need to look at whether or not our setbacks in our rules are sufficient? Are we building too close to the neighboring lot, given that condition?
I haven't seen the 30-foot setback that's being discussed, but I, my understanding is that it's a recommendation. It's not, that's not law. It's not law that they're just saying that if, if, for in a dry season, the recommended setback or distance between a residence in dry brush is 30 feet.
I have a question. A friend of mine had parked his truck on the grass next to his driveway and received a citation that it had to be removed within 30 days or he would evidently get a fine or something. Two wheels were on the grass. Has anybody sent a citation to my neighbor who has these dead trees? I've had one of his trees in my yard that I had taken out and paid for. I had trees from the first hurricane from his property in my yard, which I paid for. He did reimburse us on that, but now I've got one that was at my lightning the other night. It's hanging like this. The branch is not broken off completely, but if we're in hurricane season and a big wind comes up, I'm worried that that's going to hit my house. Can we cite that guy and make him clear that up? Is there anything that can be done in that case?
Did you indicate that the county has opened a file?
Yeah, the county opened a case number for that thing, and I'll be happy to give that information to the Portetos after the meeting, but.
So they can follow up with the county on whether or not a citation can be issued by the county?
By the county. We cannot issue a citation regarding trees.
I called the county and I called the fire marshal and both of them told me to deal with Sun and Lake. The woman was actually rude to me. And we have the same problem with another vacant lot across the street who is, it's owned by a resident of Sun and Lake that lives around the corner from us. I don't know why he bought the lot, but it has, I would say, close to eight dead trees on it, and it's right across the street from two of my neighbors, and those hurricane winds, as you know, are so powerful.
I would, I would recommend.
Can that person be cited also? Can Sun and Lake do something in that realm to cite those people and tell them that this is a danger and they must clean it up?
What I'm understanding is that is a county issue, not a district issue. So the answer is no, Sun and Lake can't cite for overgrowth.
But you can give a guy a citation for parking in the lake.
That's one of our rules, that yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
You actually don't pay another tax, so it doesn't involve, you sort of, pay a fixed property.
Had it been a cleared yard?
I can speak. I'll speak for that. I mean, if someone said, "Trees have to be removed," well, would that mean that a person who has a house
and kept a tree on his property did not take that off, would you say that that lot has not been cleared?
No, in a house, that there's a house existing on the property obviously has been cleared.
Well, but there's a tree there. There's the original tree. So the property has not been cleared because you state that if there's trees left, then it's not cleared. How many trees have to be taken down?
Mr. and Mrs. Portetto, I'm glad to meet with the two of you to discuss this further. If you would like to, to come see me next week, I mean, we can, we can, of course, go over the details.
This isn't something we're going to be able to resolve at the board meeting today because it's, it really is a county issue, and I'm sorry you had trouble with the county on that, but now if there's a case number open, maybe that can help, help. But I would say, yeah, meet, meet with Tanya over the next week. Meet with the county. I understand your concern, but it's not an issue that the district can address anymore than we have, which was to go to the county, have their tree person come out and tell us what they could. That's really all we can resolve at the board. Okay.
Tom Costy, resident. This is public comment, correct?
Uh, no, this is add-on items. We'll get to public comment in a little bit.
Public can't comment on an add-on item, is that correct? Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Public cannot comment on an add-on item?
That's correct. That, that can be addressed at public comment time.
I know when it can be, but can it be addressed at public, at, as, when an add-on item is being discussed?
These is, this is petitions and communications is what we're on right now.
Public doesn't get to comment on petitions and communications, is that?
The, that's, the public gets to comment during public comment time.
Yeah, I agree. My question is, does the public get to comment during add-on petitions and items?
No.
No! Thank you.
Okay. So any other petitions or communications?
No.
Staff reports? Any staff reports?
Yeah. Good morning, supervisors. Got a few updates for you here. As you know, Deer Run is currently closed for maintenance. With this go-around, airification will be focused on greens, tees, and high-traffic areas. There's coquina work being done on holes two and four. The, the lift station is nearing completion on the left side of 14. So you'll see the work on that left side over there to clean up that area and have it ready for completion by, by next week. The other night, I believe it was Tuesday night, it was a pretty strong lightning storm. Lightning struck some irrigation out on Turtle 16, did cause a leak, and it has been repaired with minimal damage.
Can the county take care of that?
There will also be, the post-emergent weed applications are going to continue on both courses. I'm not sure if you guys have played in the last few days, but we've had a lot of requests to remove the foam from inside the cups. Obviously, it restricts play. We did purchase, they're called Easy Lift. It's a little thing where you can use your putter to easily retract your ball out of the hole. Those were installed. So far, all the comments that I've had have been super positive. We did only purchase one set of those, which is okay in the summertime because we generally only have one course open. There are times, you know, as we transition from one closure to the other, where both courses are open. Currently, we only have one set. We're going to order a second set. I, I believe, you know, with the comments that I've heard, and I agree, you know, even when we go into normal operations, we feel that we can leave those in there. I think it helps with our clientele so they don't have to, you know, bend over to get their ball out of the hole. They don't have to jam their putters into the hole and damage, possibly damage the hole. They don't need to bend the flagsticks over and possibly damaging those. So this system kind of handles a lot of different scenarios and situations. And as I said, so far, it's been super positive. On the restaurant side, I'm sure you've noticed that the acoustic project is now complete. This time of year, we don't have large crowds, so the overall effect of it is still yet to be seen. As far as I can tell, when, when there's a few people in there, to me, you hear less echo. So to me, that's, that's very positive. I have reached out to the gentleman that came down and did all his, when he was coming up with his statistics and doing his analysis, I did ask if he was, you know, in the area. He's not going to make a special trip just for this, but I asked if he was in the area, if he would stop by and reanalyze the acoustical data to see how that has affected it. But so far, I feel it's, and a lot of people have said this as well, that it has made a positive effect, and I'm really confident that when the building is full again, that, that we have mitigated most of the noise issue in there. We are currently still operating at 50% capacity, which again is roughly 180 people. We haven't, with this time of year, out of season, it's, operating at 50% capacity is not an issue. We're not turning anybody away. Now, the signature dish program, we've had some weeks that are better than others, but month-to-date in June, we've served 119 signature dishes, which is our number-one seller for the month of any item. Obviously, there's been three or four different ones. Mainly because we had one very popular one. I updated you guys in my Monday report that we sold 64 of the whole Maine Lobsters. We had a few left over, so we continued it into this week and we sold more. We're now, have sold 75 of those. So that, that has kind of elevated it. We've had some other signature dishes that, that weren't quite as, as popular, but, you know, we'll continue to create new signature dishes and we'll bring back the popular ones and we will weed out the ones that aren't so popular. We haven't talked about it lately, but the heat-and-serve program, where you can just kind of grab and go home and, and heat a meal. That program is, is actually still been running. We just haven't really spoke about it. And it's remaining fairly popular. We have sold 54 of those in the month of June, which would put that, you know, obviously not at the top of the list for things sold in a restaurant, but it's still there. As we discussed previously, the fireworks will be going off next Friday. The, the typical event will not be as normal. However, the, the restaurant will be open that night. We'll be able to serve about, we're going to try to keep it to about 100 people for social distancing standards, but we'll be open for dinner that night. And we'll actually have private seating out on the lawn for those dinner guests so they can come in, eat, and they can have a nice view of the fireworks that we will reserve for them for patronizing the restaurant. Those reservations are over half sold already, so I assume we'll sell out to our capacity on that. We are starting to do some smaller events and banquets. We did have a small wedding ser- reception last weekend, which was about 30 or 40 people. We are scheduled to do the MGA Fourth of July Couples Event next Saturday. I looked at the sheet this morning. I believe it's around 80 people. We will be serving lunch to those 80 people. It's, it's going to take up the majority of the restaurant as we space them out and sit them in small groups. We normally would sit tables of eight. We're going to sit tables of four, which would be the same four people that they played with that day. There is an option for those who are, who are, do not want to come in and eat. They can get their meal and take it home with them. And I have noticed that there are some people on the list that are going to take that option. So we feel that we can do that safely for everybody involved, and at this time, we're going to proceed with, with those events that we can. I updated everybody individually, my plan for the Snack Shack across the street, opening that up as an ice cream parlor, if you will. We're going to start off as a, as a small operation. All those pieces are following in line, so we do have the equipment here. We're starting to get some of the product here. We still have some, a couple of things to work out, but I, I do plan to have that operational hopefully by mid-July. So we're, we're a couple of weeks out on that. You're going to start to see some advert, some advertising coming soon, things, those are coming out. We haven't put a date on it yet to make sure that, that we are ready and prepared to go. Lastly, the, the board had asked me to look at a, a rangering program for next year. I know council has reported, and Mr. Schumacher, if you want to let them know your findings on the rangering for free golf scenario?
Yeah, I believe I've sent you guys that, an email to all the supervisors that that's illegal, so.
So with that being said, I, I have spoke to, you know, a few supervisors about that. We generally do most of our rangering with our pro-staff personnel. In the current budget proposal that we'll talk of later, there is a little, there was a little bit of labor added to that, but we feel that we can increase our rangering program by shuffling some things around and we should be able to develop a little bit stronger rangering program. And we can get into that a little bit deeper, you know, if we want to, in the budget discussion as to how far we want to go. Obviously, the, the more time we have spent on the course with a ranger is obviously more money that we will need to add in the budget. I feel we can do an adequate job without further changing the budget. Next thing, I got, Mr. David Evangelista is our Regional Director of Marketing. He is here. I know we, we have, you guys have received our, our marketing plan and the survey. I don't want to dive really deep into everything that's in both of those, but I will ask if you have any questions about the data, how the data was received or how we got to where we are. David is here to help answer any questions you may have. Does anybody have any questions on that?
My God, I'll say, is that, I got that yesterday, and I got, I got as far as I can through it, but I, I really have not had the time to, to look at it with any, just not enough time.
No, I understand, so.
So I, I think maybe we can discuss it later, but I, I think right now it's, at least for me, I, I haven't had, I, I did look through it, but I can't.
No, that's understandable. Obviously, there is a lot of data in both of those. So we know it will take you some time to go through it. But if you have any, any questions of anything, he, he would be more than willing to answer those at this time. If, if you're going through it later and you have any more questions, you can, you know, feel free to send me an email. Either I will answer them or I'll, you know, forward it to David and, and he will get you an answer. We'll be happy to work through all that.
One thing I was surprised, though, is I, I wasn't aware that, that you were going to get the, that you were going to do the survey, so. And it's, it'll make any difference, but I was surprised that Billy Casper was in charge of the, of the survey, but that's just the statement, so.
Sure, and just so, just to be clear, Mr. Herrick was, was deeply involved in all that. He participated in every question that was in there, along with, with Tanya. So it was not, it was, it was not Billy Casper that came up with everything on there. We just facilitated the process of putting it together. And we worked with the district to send it out to the public, and then we compiled the data to give back to you, so we did not do that solely.
Yeah, and we did, did discuss that Mr. Herrick would work with Michael and Billy Casper to get the survey done, so.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay. I also could barely glance through the marketing plan. I did read through the survey. I did read through the survey. I thought the, the results were interesting. I'm curious as to, in your review, if you thought there were any actionable items from the survey results?
Absolutely. You know, we, we did feel that, that the survey answers were, were quite positive. Uh, one data point that sticks out to me clearly is, um, when you, when I'm looking at overall satisfaction of our members and guests, is 90, over 97% of the folks that took the survey, um, said they would recommend Sunning Lake to a friend. That, to me, that speaks volumes.
I, I agree, that's positive feedback, but I'm, I'm not sure that that points to an action.
Sure, as actionable items, I, I feel, um, you know, service standards in the restaurant was one. Um, I feel, you know, as far as, um, food quality and, and, and diversity of selections, I think we've, we've started to address kind of ahead of the game. There's a few minor things with, with, um, you know, golf course conditions that we can look at. But yes, the answer is yes, there, there are a few.
Okay.
Well, one, one area that, you know, stood out to me was the, one definite in there was about 50% of the respondents that didn't use, don't use the restaurant. And I would like a whole, I want a complete list of all comments, not just the highlighted comments that are in the presentation.
Right, just like, like you, there's a lot of data there, so to get through it all and provide it all to you, it's, it's gonna take some time. One of the things that we wanna do is put together an action plan for, with, with those actionable items, and that's what we're working on right now. I'm usually told I have a big mouth, so...
Is this better? Can you hear me? Okay, great. My name's David Evangelista. I'm with Billy Casper Golf. Uh, I've been associated with Sunning Lake since Billy Casper, uh, has, has, uh, been here. And I also used to work for Kitson and Partners. So I've been associated with this property for a very, very long time and, uh, love it a lot. So the, with the survey, we wanna go through the actionable items and putting together all of the comments for you as well. The comments that we put in the survey presentation were a really good representation of what the responses were. If 50 people told us, "Hey, everything's great," we only put that once. We, we didn't put all 50 comments saying we're great or any of the alliterations of it. So, uh, that's, that's what we did with that and we'll, we'll certainly get through it. But great response, 449 people responded to it. Um, and we got some really good feedback and data in there, both on the golf course and, and the community as well. 449. 449 out of 1,500, about 1,500 surveys. We don't know the... We know members, uh, versus resident. Yep, members, it was about two-thirds. So, I'm sorry, it wa, yes, two-thirds members, one-third public. Right, so... Excuse me? What do you mean it doesn't work?
We have 300, that's memberships. We have, that's memberships. A lot of those are couples who equally got to speak their voice. There's over 500 members.
Excuse me? I don't know. Overall, the scores were, um, if you, if you would base things out of 10 on anything that was rated, uh, most scores were in the, the high sevens, low eights, o- on average. We had some that would go a little bit lower, some would go higher. The public, obviously, i- it's always this way when we do surveys, but the public rated us better than the members do. The members are always tougher, but we're used to that. That happens at every golf club that we do surveys at. But it wasn't a huge difference, so if, if the public, you know, gave us an eight, the member would've given us a, a seven and a half out of 10. You know, sometimes it was maybe an eight and a seven, it just depends. But, um, you know, it was, it was all over. There's, there's a smaller percentage that, you know, don't like some of the things and are asking for a lot of, um, improvements. There's a smaller percentage that just loves everything. And then in the middle is where you sort of get the, the, the most of the people that are, that are, um, responding. Yes, sir? It, that is up to... Yeah.
It's all public, it's public record, so anybody is allowed to see it.
We can, we can certainly get information to anybody who wants it.
It's a very large file.
And we've, we unfortunately have major issues. I would, I would say, you know, we could put it on the web, but then we would have the issues of the ADA, which would make it very difficult to interpret on the internet. But if we make it available in the office for people... I, I'm not sure everybody on the email list wants it. It's actually, actually a, it's, it's a pretty, pretty big, uh, result, and this is just the summary.
It's 91 pages.
I certainly have no problems, uh, working with the board, figuring out, okay, what are the 25 questions? We want to be able to just share with everybody we think is important. Like, I don't think you guys really care how many women responded versus how many men, right? I don't think you really care what the, the membership breakdown was of the responses. Um, so we can certainly go through and pick the ones we want, and I can put together a smaller presentation on maybe some of the more important questions to you all. So we're, we're willing to do whatever, whatever they like.
So we'll have staff work with Billy Casper to create a, uh, an easier-to-read, emailable summary that we can send out, but if anybody wants the full summary, it's available at the office.
Yeah.
If you read about surveys, surveys are usually skewed to the positive so that the people who are going to review it see the positive. When you read about surveys, the questions, the way they're asked, you only get a positive response. And you can check that on the internet.
I, I certainly understand, but when we provided the results, um, when we provided it to the board, we put in as many negative comments about what is going on in the community or what is going on at the golf course as we did positive. We tried to take a really good representation. There was a lot of comments about the community within it, though. So when, when a question was asked about, um, "How do you feel about Sunning Lake?" People were talking about landscaping and sidewalks and things like that as well, so...
Roads not being maintained and there's, there, there are negative comments in there.
Yeah. Yes, yes, just residents, yep. The only people outside the gates are members that don't live in Sunning Lake. They did, they did get the respon, we have it broken apart by them as well. That was a small amount. I think maybe 60 people, 60 responses.
Excuse me, the problem areas that you have defined, are they going to be rectified?
Well, that's what, uh, we were talking about. We wanna put together, we wanna have some time to go through it and put together an action, action plan for the things that we feel we need to approve. Some of them, we're gonna have to get some more information. One of the, one of the ones I think that was most confusing, especially for me in marketing, was communication that we don't, we don't do a good enough job communicating. Um, within that, the, the series of questions, the number one way people, 98% of the people, wanna receive the communication through email. And so looking through our data from the last year, we've sent 158 communicative emails out to the membership in the community, uh, through this. It's about an average of three a week, and the open rates on the emails were less than 30%. So that's what we have to understand is what about the communication are, are, are folks not liking? Because it's not that they're not getting it, it's just that it's not being read as much and then to, to score bad on that. So we, we need to just figure that out a little bit. Is it what we're saying or how we're saying it? But i- if the communication's being provided, we just need to make sure what, find out what people don't like about it.
The important thing to remember, though, is that, that fact is skewed because the people who responded were responding to an email survey, not, the people who don't get emails didn't respond to that survey.
Well, what, what's kinda funny about it is when you look at a, an average of 30% open rate on emails, we had about a 30% response rate on the, on the survey too. So it sort of, sort of evens out.
Thank you, that's, um, that's all for me.
Just a minute. Last meeting, Supervisor Brooks asked for a documented action plan as to what activities you were doing to minimize the loss for the balance of this year. I asked that that be emailed to us so that we had time to review it prior to this meeting. I never received anything, though I don't know whether anyone else did.
I have not.
That must be a misunderstanding on my part. I thought part of, I thought that was the marketing plan that we were putting forth to you that has all those, um, all that stuff in there.
That's not this year.
From this day forward, so that, that's totally my fault if I misunderstood that. I will, I will put you something together immediately and have that to you.
Thank you. Mike, I just have, just a couple of comments on, uh, I played golf a couple of weeks ago and I looked on number six on deer and saw that, uh, the grounds were destroyed. And whoever I was playing with said, "Should we call the clubhouse?" And I said, "Nah, I'm sure they, they know about it already." Well, two days later, I talked to, uh, somebody and they told me that they called the next day and nobody knew about it. I, I just hope that, that we start having our people at least check the golf course on a daily basis in the morning, because there was quite a bit of damage there and, and you should've known about that right away. And my other comment was about the, the Rangers. You know, I, I understand your comment that you, that you feel that we can do this, but right now it's just a terrible job. And I don't know if you're satisfied with what's going on now, but I can tell you as a member playing out there, it is terrible. And, you know, and I'll, I guess, I spent five years on this board and, uh, I'll keep hearing you that you think it's fine and you think you can do this and that, but I'll tell you, it's terrible. And I, I don't know what the answer is, that's, that's yours to do, but, and, and I'm, I'm kinda meek about it. A lot of our members see it all the time, a lot more than I do, and it's just, I just think you ought to evaluate a little better that, that it's not at all acceptable right now.
So, I just wanna break that down a little bit. You, you're, we're, we're referring to that we need to have more rangering to police the golf course? Or you're just saying...
Well, do you want, do you want people driving anywhere they want to if they don't have a handicap thing?
Sure, so...
That's basically what it is, and, and nobody knows 'cause nobody's out there.
Right, so I just, um, I just wanted that clarification, so it's, it's a policing issue.
And there's also people out there that, with carts that don't have trail stickers, they're not allowed on the course and they're doing it quite a bit. I believe there's also quite a bit of free play going on that we don't even know about. I think the ranger is definitely a needed. And, but I don't understand, as Mike brought up, how can we go that long on number six deer without somebody that, we've got staff running up and down that street or that fairway daily, and we didn't see it? I don't understand. And I, I don't know that there's an answer to it, but it would sure seem to me the staff ought to be looking at the grounds as they're traveling down through there.
Sure.
I mean, they're more familiar with the property than I, than I am. And then on, a, a typical example, I think, on, of the disappointment that we have sometimes is on number 14, gold tee box. We didn't use that tee box all season long until we closed deer down, then we came back and opened it back up. That's when the gold was moved over to where it had been, let's say. But it wasn't there all sea, the prime season. But yet, when you get on that box, it's just like it had never, ever been touched as far as the quality. All kinds of bare spots on it, dugout, it wasn't leveled. I, why are we shutting down the course? I mean, why didn't we do something on that box the whole time that we're not using it? That's just one example.
Sure, it's understandable. I do know, you know, there, probably the majority of the reason why that tee box was not addressed in the wintertime is, is it's a non-growing season. Um, you know, you, we need a growing season to help prepare that. So you'll be seeing that being addressed now as it starts to grow in. As far as the, the hog damage on number six goes, I, I'm not sure the exact night that it happened and the timeline of how long it took for me to know that. I do know that you notified me about that. Um, I was, I'm gonna ask Earl if, if, if he, if his folks alerted him, um, and then if the communication failure was then between me and Earl. Um, but I'm sure they were aware of it soon. Um, and, and the communication failure may have been from them to us, to the pro shop, so, um, that may be why the pro shop folks were not aware of it. But we will address that communication issue, uh, moving forward.
As far as the, I hear what you said on the growing season, but March through the end of May is a pretty good growing season for many things, in my opinion. And we, it just didn't look like we even touched the box. That's, but that's just one example of several that we could be sitting here and talking about.
I just also have noted when, in mid-March, we cut our staff in half due to COVID and trying to retain staff. So it was a tough year. I'm not, I'm not trying to defend that. We, we will address that issue, but we, we did have some complications that we had to deal with right at the end of season. But again, that's, we will address that issue.
Speaking of staffing, how many reservations, if you know, did you have last night at the, at the restaurant?
I was here till eight o'clock. It was a slow night.
And didn't we have three to four waitresses, plus the bartender?
Uh, when I was here, there was, you know, I was here from, I, I did have to leave, but I was here from five to eight. Uh, I know there was one bartender and one server at that time. You gotta note that especially this time of year, um, the majority of our businesses do not make reservations. They are, they are walk-in customers. Um, so our, our ideal timeframe to serve, our most popular time is between five and six. So it's, it's hard to make staff cuts in that timeframe when you're not 100% sure of how many people are gonna walk in the door. So when I was here later, there were, the cuts were made after the, you know, when business is, is the most. We made those cuts, and when I was here till eight, um, I know there was only a bartender here from seven to eight, um, finishing up with the last few people. But it was a slow night, yes, we, we did cut staff back after we got time, our prime serving time. So, um, we do make those adjustments.
All right.
Okay. Any other staff reports?
Um, yeah, I'll go next. We had, uh, 90 citations written last month. We had 407...
We had 470 watch orders. Speaking of the hogs, our trapper caught eight, five of whom were the area that Mike was talking about. And I asked the trapper about that. I said, how come we go by one day, and then the next day, there's so much damage done? How can it happen so quick? And he said, if they're moving, he said, you can get six or seven moving, and they'll do a lot of damage really quick in a night. And they're looking for food. So, so I directed them to that area, and also Cortez area where we're having trouble, when I haven't. Where we put the fence, I think, now they're moving. And he also said that, that they've gone through litters, you know, so they're moving to get more food. And Mike's, and I'm not, well, I am defending Mike a little, I guess, on this. You know, we're trying to catch the, oh, I'm sorry. We're trying to, right now, we got the hog, hog trapper coming three days a week. He's caught a few big ones, real big ones. But I asked him that question, you know, how can it happen so quick? You know, and how come nobody can hear these? He said, he said, they can be right outside your door, and he said, you may not hear them, you know? So, in defense from Mike, you know, because they didn't see it one day, they're riding by, but Mike and I actually took a ride out there. He showed me the areas, Earl showed me the areas. So, we are addressing that, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll catch more. So, we are working on the hog problem, believe me.
So, they are still running traps?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They actually cut, I got a, I got a picture from him this morning that he caught two out there last night. Oh, I'm sorry, he cut two out there last night, so, you know, I mean, it's a problem, it's, it's nature. I mean, what are we going to do? We also have a problem with bears. You know, I've, I've, I've got a lot of calls on bears, and it's usually on Wednesday nights, when everyone's putting their trash out, and I don't know, maybe no, I don't know, maybe the bears notice trash, I don't know, but, you know, you know, those are nights we're getting them, so.
Was there any more activity at the county level as far as this hog contract?
Nothing yet. There's still no activity. I know they're dragging their feet with it, so there's no activity.
I wanted to say something here, and I was not going to say anything because I feel like it's a, a no-win situation when we talk about certain items that people are unhappy with unless they come to us individually and we can address it and talk through maybe what might be happening, or what they're displeased with. But going to the hogs specifically, to, to insinuate or act like that we just ride through and nobody cares, and nobody's paying attention to it daily, is really kind of insulting to my staff as well as myself. We saw the hog damage, we talked about it, we talked to Mike initially, I rode with Mike out there, I rode with Mike Lemire, we talked about trapping, we talked about, I still think I'm in favor of shooting hogs, but it amazes me that at this board meeting for three months, we've been talking about hog damage in the community and everywhere, and we get the first hog damage we've had in almost three years on the golf course, and the immediate reaction is that Billy Casper is not doing their job. But that wasn't the reaction when it was happening to residents or other places in the community. It was, let's work through the problem, let's figure out what the solution might be. But for us, it, it has to be immediate. I don't trap hogs, I can't go out and shoot them, so my, my thing with that is to go to Mike Hurley and say, hey, what, what can we do? Can we get the hog trapper out? Literally the day after, at least I believe the day after, and then we talked about it on Tuesday, because you were playing in the golf league. We went out and I said, are we going to do this tonight? Are we going to go here? Because they had moved from hole six up to hole seven. I don't know what else on my end, what my staff could do, but again, to me, it's just an example of, we're supposed to address it right away and, and make it stop, but any other thing through the community, we work through a process and, and.
My comment.
We absolutely saw the hog damage. We saw when it started down in the, the bottom of the, the drainage pond to start with. I didn't think at the time they were going to go up toward the golf course, which they didn't for a while, because we've sprayed, there's not a ton of mole crickets or anything in those areas. It would make sense that they would start in the low areas because we don't spray all the behagia grass as far as chemical goes. We just can't do it budget-wise, and that's what they're going after, is, is the insects and the grubs, and the, mainly the mole crickets there in those outer areas, but anyway.
My comment was, my, my comment was not about you getting rid of the hogs, Earl. It was, it took you three days to know what was going on. That's, that's what I was talking about, so. Well, how come we called, nobody knew about it?
It sounds like.
See, and that's what I'm talking about.
The only thing I want to say is, we are working on the hogs.
We know that, we know you're working.
I know, Michael, but when we're contacted, we get out there right away. Tanya is really tough with me with that. She wants me to get on them right away, and, and, and I love it that way, because I want to get it done, right? I live here also, all right, and they are trying, okay? Now, I want to bring up one thing about this shooting, okay? We, we just had a resident garage down the end of Columbus, found a hole from somebody shooting from the, from the, across the street from Columbus on the very end, they shoot there all the time, okay? This is the fourth time in the last few years that a stray bullet got to a house, okay? And you guys keep telling me, we want to shoot them. Well, you know what? We're catching them. I really believe, I think it's a bad move to go in there and shoot them unless they already have them caught and they hold them there. But to take somebody out there with a rifle.
We've, we've talked about shooting them with bows and arrows and crossbows and, and less lethal weapons than guns.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to hear the.
Our, our goal is to eliminate the problem.
Right, exactly, Neil. And, and really, I think that's all we're trying to, you know.
Trapping isn't doing it very quickly.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You know, and Earl's very frustrated, and I understand, because I see it, I mean, him and I talk every day, you know? And I mean, I think Earl's working out there, you know, they're trying to fix these problems, so.
And again, I don't, I don't think the criticism was that the, the people working the problem weren't as aware of it, but the communication between the people working the problem and the pro shop, so the pro shop couldn't tell anybody what was going on.
Right, and I agree with that.
And that's what my statement was about, not about all this hog crap that we're talking about. You guys do a good job getting rid of them. The problem is, we got to know, and it's got to be communicated, that somebody knows about it. And that's not happening.
Right, Michael, but you got to understand, a lot of times, something happens, even on the golf course, they don't call Michael, they call me. Why? Because it's, well, and I'll talk to Mike in the, well, right. But they'll call me at night, they'll call me, you know, you know, during the day, and I try to get ahold of Mike the next morning if I hear something. But you got to understand, most of these people in this room, you ask them who they call if they have a problem, okay?
Mike Hurley.
Right, okay? So, you can't blame Michael, and you can't blame Earl for not knowing everything, okay? Because a lot of things come through security, a lot, you know? And, you know, we do the best we can. I report to Tanya every morning. She probably hates to see me come in here because he, you know, she knows there's a problem. But we do address everything right away as long as we know it. And I promise you that, we will always do that.
Okay, I think, I think the issue here again is just communication, and I think Mike Lemire should know anything that's going on, on the golf course. So, he can communicate it to any staff that's pertinent to that, and it sounds like there was a breakdown in this situation.
I mean, Mike's my neighbor. I go to his house and tell him, come out, we got to go. So, no, he's, I don't know.
Did we find out what the odor issue was at the clubhouse last night?
So, we've been, we've been working on this for, for a little bit now. Mike can probably talk to it.
What it was, because it was closed down so long, the drains weren't being used, you know, the certain areas. We did call the plumber last week, he did come in there, but there were some drains that Mike and I walked through, we realized he missed. So, what we're doing, he's coming in Tuesday morning with two guys, and we're going to go through every drain, right? And then we're going to put them on a PM plan to do them every couple of months. What they do is they put a chemical down there. What it was, if a drain doesn't, if it's not being used, it kind of builds up in there and it shows back. And, and, and that's not Michael's fault, that's my fault. I had the plumber there, okay? We had him go through it, but he didn't miss, he missed three or four drains.
I'm not blaming anybody, I just wanted to make sure we found out what it was.
Well, I'll take the blame on that, right? Because Mr. Norcross behind me, Mr. Norcross behind me actually pulled me to the side and let me know, so I was glad to hear that, maybe.
I called you too.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
No.
Any other staff reports? General Counsel report.
Just a couple of things for me. Tanya, President Hoteling and I had our meeting with the county attorney yesterday regarding the changes of the voting process. My takeaway from that meeting was that she was going to perform some risk assessment and then potentially put it on the Board of County Commissioners agenda within a month or two. So, hopefully, she'll be notifying us when that, when that happens.
And this was to change the landowner election so that it's one vote per?
Parcel.
Parcel.
One vote per parcel. The only other issue that we had is our June-July newsletter had some, had a notification about the prohibited fireworks. The law has recently changed. On June 17th, the governor signed a law stating that on 4th of July, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, the fireworks can be used, there's an exception, and so, we're going to be printing a public notice in, I believe tomorrow's paper, and also sending out e-blasts. When we, when the newsletter went out, the information was accurate, but the law has changed, and so, we're putting out that public notice. Other than that, litigation and foreclosures are still at a stale space because of COVID and the water damage at the courthouse.
What about the, what about the meters? Any movement on that?
I know that there has been some, they're doing some installs of some newer, some new units, but that's just a Band-Aid, we're still proceeding, they're, they're still within the 45-day timeline. I think that answer, they have to have their answer before the end of the month, or maybe before the 4th of July, I think we're expecting that answer.
Okay. General Manager's report.
Good morning Supervisors, just a few project updates I have for you. The drainage and paving projects are scheduled to start sometime in August. The shuffleboard project currently is underway, so you've seen the clearing on the lake there, and they've taken out the fence, so they're moving forward with that project. From a utility side, the Matanzas lift station is now open and operational. We also received bids on Tuesday for the Unit 23 wastewater treatment plant. This is a pipe diffuser project, so we received six bids, which we're, you know, we're glad to see some competition there. So, engineering and our, our staff are currently, you know, reviewing that information. You know, as Mike mentioned earlier, we have the July 3rd fireworks, our security will be on staff. We do encourage social distancing, you know, in, for the fireworks show. You can, you know, watch the fireworks from your car, you can, you know, whatever you want to do, but we do encourage, you know, that, you know, guideline, the CDC guidelines. Also, we have brand-new software for our recreational memberships that is now up and operational. So, everything, everything has been moving forward with that. We also will be buying new software for preventative maintenance of our equipment. So, you've probably heard us talk through some of that, so we're moving forward with that project as well. Our pool facilities, racket club, we seem to be running very smoothly. We haven't had any capacity issues that I'm aware of, maybe, you know, a couple that, you know, we do still require the sign-in sheets, so I think everything's moving smoothly there. So, that's all I have.
Tanya, I got a question. I don't know if you or Mike have talked about it, but on number 10 to the right, we have about 15 trees that are just standing there, real dead. Have those been addressed, or are we just going to? I, I don't know, except pine, it must be the pine stuff, but we have a bunch of them, they're dead, and I don't know if they're a, a risk to anybody or not, but there's a whole bunch of dead ones. Are you familiar with it, have you seen it?
I'm familiar, yes, sir.
Okay.
We have no plans to address those trees. Are you asking if we're going to go in and remove them?
Is that something we would do, Mike, or, or is that something?
I mean, it is our property, it's Scrub J Habitat.
Well, I meant, as far as, would we hire somebody to do that, or we do it ourselves?
We can do some in-house, you know, if it's way too big, or it's, or it's, or it's too close to a, a home or a line, but we can probably do most of them ourselves.
But, and there's also the ones over there around the turn, too, off of Sunland Lake Boulevard. There's a lot of dead trees in that whole area. We don't.
We haven't had any specific plans to do any tree removal in that area. I know, maybe last year, year before, we, we took out a few trees in the wetland area on Sunland Lake Boulevard, but that would be at a board's direction of the board, you know, I know there'd be some budgeted cost to go in and, and, I mean, it's not, it doesn't have any effect on any homes or anything, but we'd be glad to look at it and see. Can we, can we bring back to you some information on that? Okay.
Please.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
And public comments? So, now, public can comment.
Tom Costi, resident. Suggestion to the Vertetos. You might contact Judge Peter Estrada. He wrote a letter to the district and got the trees taken care of in the lot next door to him. He lives in Manor Hill.
But he's a judge.
I understand. That was two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
We have a district magistrate who comes in and listens to and gives opinions on code enforcement issues. And I would suggest that, that his services be addressed with some of this stuff, some of this discussion about what is supposed to be cleared or can be cleared by the district versus the county, depending on a contractor who works for the county to make a judgment on an issue that you have regarding safety, with regard to lightning, dead foliage on the lot next door, et cetera. Let me know when my time's up, I'm looking at my notes here, I don't want to miss anything. There's a new account that I've noticed, or a new LLC that's been formed, I believe it's called Sunland Lake Golf Club of Virginia LLC. Does anybody here can tell me what that's all about? I think it's Sunland Lake of Sebring Golf Club of Virginia LLC. Doesn't ring a bell with anybody evidently. The other thing I'd like to point out is that in the, in the archives, and I believe there's a, there's a spreadsheet that's kept with all motions made at board meetings, and also all resolutions enacted at board meetings. I believe that if you look back about 10 years ago, under the regime of none other than Robert Severino, there was a policy put into place about questions that come up during board meetings, that if they're not answered at the board meeting, an individual will be assigned by the, whoever's running the meeting, an individual will be assigned to provide an answer to the question that comes up, and that it will be answered in writing to the questioner and also published in the minutes of the next meeting. To my knowledge, that's not been happening for at least five years. Thank you.
Can you look into that resolution and get us up to date? It's not one I'm familiar with. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. It's nice to see everybody here for a change. Congratulations for being here. A couple of quick questions. There was a suggestion, I don't know if you can hear me or not. Has there been a suggestion to have an ice cream stand at the snack shack? Now, that, that was brought up a couple of years ago by the chef, and he said, well, he says, we had an ice cream stand on the service road up there, we're out of business. And then I'm thinking about, what about the litter? What about parking? What about everything else and the cost? So, I just want you to maybe rethink that particular proposal, because I, I can't see it working, I really can't. And we would have children running around, and it may not be a good idea. Also, the trash collection is changing now, so we have separation. separation. We know that, right? Okay, fine. The advertising program, I sent it to everybody, pictures of the billboard on 27 going up near, out of Avon Park up to Market 27. It's on the wrong side of the road. It's on the left-hand side going north. Nice sign, yeah, but, you know, it's going towards the metropolis of Frostproof. Oh, nice. I can't understand it. I really can't. It's a nice sign. It could have been turned around going south. So people gets a head, they get a heads up five or six miles before they get to Sunning Lake instead of going to Orlando looking for Sunning Lake. I talked with Mike Lemire yesterday about the advertising program and how extensively, he was very, very nice about it, and how extensively Casper is promoting it. They sent it to Idaho and Michigan and a lot of other places. We don't know. We don't see the advertising. So I wish you would probably elaborate on some of that stuff a little bit more to satisfy the question of what kind of advertising we have. Is it working? I don't think so. But we have a situation where people would come here if they had easy transportation from an airport. Fort Myers is 100 miles away. Orlando's 84. Tampa's 100 miles away. So if somebody could figure a way of getting these people here, it would probably be more effective advertising. There's a lot more, but give somebody else a chance. Thanks.
Thank you.
I find it quite interesting that after the conversation about the trees and, and the fallen trees and the situation in our neighborhood, to hear that there are three trees on the golf course that are going to be taken down. They are, no possible damage to anybody's home or to their health or to their children, but yet you'll take those trees down, but you won't consider trying to help us in our neighborhood with our fallen trees. And I, I find that kind of amazing. Thank you.
We can't do it.
The difference is the trees on the golf course are on our property.
And the thing that my husband read says you can do it.
I'll make one final comment. Code enforcement. I'll read it again. The Division of Security and Code Enforcement seeks to enhance the neighborhood and the residents for health, security, safety, and general welfare of the community. This isn't worth the piece of paper it's worth on.
Any other public comment?
Yes. Yes, I have a question about speed bumps.
Your name?
What's the process you have to go through?
We need your name.
John Durbanow. I live on Barbarossa Avenue. Could anybody answer that question about speed bumps? Who decides, who gets a speed bump in their street? Speed bumps, you know?
Slow cars down.
We have a petition that you can take to your neighbors. And I believe the number is 20. If 20 of your neighbors sign this petition, you present it to the district office and it'll be brought in front of the board.
Okay, where do I?
So you just get 20 signatures on the block and that's it?
Saying that you would request speed bumps be placed in your specific streets.
Okay. And bring it where?
To the district office.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula Quinn. Never did this before, so I'm pretty nervous. I'm, I'm questioning the raises of the fees for the, for the pool and the recreation centers. I have letters here. I would like them to be put into the minutes. And I'm only going to read one of them at this time. We're writing this letter to inquire into the proposal increase regarding the community pool. Our understanding is that the proposed increased membership pool rates will be increased 250% from the current rate of 60 to 150 a single member. We are attempting to find out what, with this inquiry is why such a drastic increase of 250% is necessary. If this rate increases purely the results of an accounting judgment where you have X amount of money paid per membership, which, with the cost running the pool operation showing a deficit to justify the increase, then the question has to be asked, how long has this been going on? Where did you find the funds to cover this much loss during the duration of the deficit? And why wasn't there a gradual increase in rates over the period of time is the question when you review the P and L and the balance sheets of quarterly basis? I don't need to keep going on, but there's a lot of people here that enjoy the amenities that don't have a golf membership. I don't have a golf membership. I enjoy going to the pool. I enjoy going to the classes that are, are there. I have my own pool. And if you're going to raise the rates that high, there's no way I'm going to join the pool. There's a lot of, the Canadians won't be joining here. A lot of the Canadians might not even be coming back. So if you're going to raise these fees that high, you're not going to have people joining any of these, the racket, the weight room, the weight room especially. For you to raise that up, you can go anywhere and get a lot less for a weight room that actually has stuff into it. I know everything has to be increased and that's fine. And you can go ahead and increase this, but do it at a gradual rate. I mean, raise it to $70 or 75, not 150. Any of the snowbirds that are here, that's going to cost them a lot more because they're only here four to six months a year. They can't divide that in between 12 months, like maybe somebody like myself that lives here. So my, my questions are why, why such a drastic raise? Also, I know everybody that has a golf membership also is allowed to go to these, the pool and all that is included into their golf membership. So does any of their money that goes for the golf go to the racket ball, the pool and all the other amenities? Where does that money go to? Do you know?
Those are all good questions. And we discussed it to some degree at the, the budget meeting on this issue. We haven't come to a resolution. So your comments are timely and, and well considered. It is an issue in the, that we're looking at the market value and the fact that we haven't raised the rates gradually over time in years. So the, the factor is that what, what we have found is that we're underpriced for those facilities. And we're trying to get to a point where it makes sense, whether or not we do it in one fell swoop or if we do gradually go up in the rates. That's what we still have to resolve as a board. So we understand your concern.
Well, like I said, we, I, I know everything goes up and I think most people do, but to, it's just way too drastic. And I think you're going to lose a lot of people.
Yeah.
And you're going to lose more money. So how much of the golf membership that all these people that use these facilities, how much of their golf membership goes towards to help supporting them? Do you know?
But the reality is, the, the way the accounting works is it doesn't work. Because the, the golf memberships go towards the golf course and we're still in a deficit on the golf courses. So we're in, we're in a deficit on all of the amenities that we offer. So it's not a question of can some of the golf money go to, to offset the cost of the pool? The, the golf memberships don't fully cover the, the nut either. So we're, we're kind of underwriting all of the amenities. So.
I was under the impression the only thing making money around here was the golf course. Is that a lie? Is that true?
Everything generates revenue. Does any of it make a profit? No. So.
All right. Well, I would just like you to take that in consideration. I'm not asking not to raise it. I'm just asking to raise it where people can afford it.
Understood. Point well taken.
Dave Ollig, resident. When you get into the workshop, are you going to allow public comment at certain intervals along there? Or are you just not going to have any public comment? That's the question I'm asking because she just brought up a budget issue that's probably going to be discussed when you start talking about budgets. And I don't want to sit here for three or four hours and not have a chance to make my sharp comments that, that's related to that same issue.
It's a, it's a valid question. If we, if we have public comments throughout the workshop, we might be here all day. But I see a lot of interest in that. Does the board have any feelings on?
I think if you read the policy procedure manual, you have to have public comment at the workshop.
I understand we have public.
It doesn't tell you what the intervals have to be.
Right. So the, the question is, do we want to allow public comment at the end of the workshop as we would normally do? Or do we want to allow it throughout the workshop? And, and that would be a question I'm asking for an opinion from other board members.
I think you got three sections and maybe you'll have three public comment sessions. One for golf, one for general fund, et cetera.
That, that would be the norm is that we would have public comment at the end of each of the budget discussions.
Excuse me. There hasn't been a precedent set already for intervals of subject to have public comment?
That's not true. It's been done a dozen different ways.
So I, I don't know that there's a clear precedent other than our, our common practice has been, we would allow public comment at the end of the, the golf, at the end of the general fund, et cetera.
Is that the way you're going to proceed?
That's the way we're going to proceed.
Okay, then I'll save mine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim Jones, the resident here. Just a comment on what Paul is talking about. I would appreciate it if the board would look into what's been budgeted in the past for the recreation facilities, where the money goes. Is it on?
Is it on? You just weren't close enough.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if the board would try to find out and get the results of the last couple of years of budget. What's been budgeted for the recreation facilities? Where does the money go? I understand it goes under some kind of general fund, but I'd like to know that. I don't think it's a profit-making facility. It's something that you're entitled to, to belong in a Sunning Lake community, in the golf course community. But if you would take a look at that and consider what's been budgeted, I see no maintenance being performed over there in the last two years. We've got wind screens that's been down for a year and a half. Nobody's working on them. There's no upkeep. And now we're going to build more facilities, shuffleboard. Who's going to maintain this? Who's going to, where's the money come from? Just to try to do a 200% increase to support this and it's going into a general fund where nobody knows where it goes is not right. I'd, I'd say take a long look at what you're trying to do.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Good morning. Javita McKinney. Just a suggestion, question also, if, if it's possible to go ahead and open up or do we still have to keep waiting? I believe if we can get everything fully going, the restaurant, the this, the that, all of these little issues with finances can almost be solved, maybe not. But, you know, if you have to keep just 100 people in your restaurant and you're used to serving four, 500, we've already in a, you know, been in a deficit. I mean, how, how long before we're going to really open up and stop being afraid of this virus?
We're taking our direction from the state. And because of the overall increases in Florida right now, it's going to be a slow process, I'm afraid.
And it's not like a timeline on that? I mean, I'm listening to the news and everything as well via YouTube, but I was, there's not like a state, the, you know, I thought the governors were in charge of everything as well too. And there's no like three months, six months. What's the hope for this?
He's provided some general guidelines in his previous movement, but because of the increase in the virus, we don't know if that's going to stay with that general guidance or if it'll be expanded. We just, we're, we're taking our lead from that.
Okay.
We, I'd, I'd love to be able to open up as well, but we want to keep people safe too.
Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job.
Any other public? Okay, board to board. Anyone?
Yeah, I, I have a comment. Couple of months ago, one of our supervisors asked if we could bring in other management companies and listen to them and see what they have to say. Well, we got this meeting out of that, which is fine. But last week, I talked to one of the management companies I never had before because I didn't know much about him. They, they said they would be very welcome to come in here free of charge. They, none of the management companies would charge. They come in and they look at our books. They look at our operations and they make recommendations. No charge. I'm, I'd like to do that. And I'd like to see if there's three of us that would go along with that now. And I know we're working on the budget with Billy Casper, but we, we need to find out what's out there, where we can save money, what other ideas other companies have. And it might even save us some money and have some new ideas. So I'm asking if, if we have three of the supervisors that would be willing to bring in, and I think we'd have to do that, Tanya, if I'm not right, we'd have to do it since we're government, we'd have to advertise it. We couldn't just pick out a few. We'd have to advertise. Is that correct?
We would have to advertise as a request for proposals for a management company. Now, that's, that's a little different than what you just stated. I, when you say you have a company come in for free and look at our books, I, I would not, I would not allow a company to just come in, any company, just to come in and look at our books. What we would do is we'd advertise the process of what they need to do for proposals. And then they can do a request for information.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what they'd probably do, but I didn't say it correctly.
I got you. So.
But that's, that's what I would be.
The process would be for the district to advertise as request for proposals for a management company. And then, of course, we would have a deadline on that.
Yeah.
For proposals. And then it could be, management companies could come in and do presentations to the board, or you could have a committee that would narrow it down. You know, you, I don't know how many management companies would put in a bid, but we could, you know, just wait and see if that's something the board would want to entertain. Are you talking about right now?
Well, we could start the process or whatever it is, but this wouldn't be automatically getting rid of Billy Casper. This would, this would, to bring in ideas, and they, they could even come up with a different idea. Because we saw, we're going to talk about some of the ideas they've had in this meeting here. So I guess they could do whatever it is. But I, I just would like to, to see what else is out there and their ideas and, and But I I just would like to to see what else is out there and their ideas and and what we can do to help Sunland Lake. Because we're certainly not doing well. I've been here five years with Billy Casper as the management company. And I think I can, I can tell you, they're trying, but sometimes it just, it's not working, whether, whatever the reason is. And I know we've had a couple of things the last summers. But if you look at the books on a yearly basis going up, we're not going up, we're going down. And we need, we, and I don't have the ability, and I don't think any of us here do. It's people like Michael Amir and Earl back there. They're the ones that are supposed to be telling us what to do, but it's supposed to be working. And that's what I want. I I'd like to know if there's one other supervisor that would go along with this and just look into it. That's all I want.
So you're proposing that we go out for a request for proposal to other golf management companies to tell us what they could do and what it would cost to become the the managers of the golf and clubhouse operation as an alternative to Billy Casper?
That's correct.
I fully support that. I brought it up a month and a half ago. I have not been involved in trying to manage the assets of a district such as this. I believe that it's incumbent upon us to go out and find out what other management groups would charge and what they would do for us. We have to do something, in my opinion, to change the course that we're currently on. We have to increase our revenue, and I don't see us doing that under the current way we are doing business. So I think it's only, it could only add to our ability to make a good decision, hopefully a good decision, on how we should proceed into the future. So I fully support it.
My understanding of the history is that at some point, we hired Kitson, and Kitson was acquired by Billy Casper. I don't know if we went out to bid at that time, but it would seem like it's been a long time since we've looked at alternatives. I don't know, based on my experience with golf operations, I don't know that a new management company is necessarily going to solve all the problems. But I'm not opposed to getting some bids and seeing what comes of it.
I think there's value in knowing what the alternatives are. So I would support doing that exploration, but my concern would be about timing at this stage.
Well, it could be a while before we get everything resolved.
I think we have to be thinking in terms of six months down the road because we have to publish golf rates here, wouldn't Tanya?
Correct. And also, I'd recommend a supervisor or maybe a committee to be established for, to put together criteria that we're looking for. I mean, in a, in a contract. I mean, that, we can put out proposals, but we do need to set some, you know, some criterias for that as far as restaurant, restaurant and details, service, you know, whatever that is. So.
Don't you already have a boilerplate?
We do. Yeah, we do. So is there any comments on timing?
I would, I would say this is exploratory at this point, and that I I'd be hesitant to set a timeline. I would say that, you know, we're we're contracted with Billy Casper. When, do we know when that contract expires?
Six months after we give notice.
Exactly. So so we can do the research, and in my view, we're working with Billy Casper. And Billy Casper will continue to be our operator. And at this point, I don't anticipate a change. But I think we need to get the information in whatever format and timeframe works, evaluate it in whatever timeframe works, and make a decision whether it's time to change or continue our relationship with Casper.
I I totally agree. So it's it's not like, let's do it tomorrow, but we we have to start the process and see what's out there.
All right. I'll come back to the board at the next meeting with the timeline.
Okay. Do we need a motion to move forward with this? Or we can wait until you come back with a timeline and we'll move at that point? We basically got a consensus to go forward.
I don't really need any formal motion at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other board to board? I'm, I'm a little concerned that we have an election coming up in August. We've had discussions about doing some kind of public meeting where we can bring together people that are running that have an impact on this district. We obviously have, I think, four people running for the two seats that come up in January. So I would, I would like to get something on the calendar where we can have a public meeting where the candidates for the board of supervisors can have a chance to address the public, and the public can come and ask questions. And whether or not we would include in that the candidates for our county district or make that a separate thing. But at at the very least, I think we need to have a public meeting for the public to meet the contenders for the commission, the board, the, our board of supervisors.
Ariel, excuse me. Ariel was in the process of contacting those four individuals to see if there's an interest in a, in a meet and greet, public forum. And I don't have a status on that, but I'll, I'll get a status.
Okay. I think we should schedule the meeting and trust that they will have interest. And if they don't have an interest in a public meeting, that tells us a lot as well. So you, she might be wanting to contact them to find out if there's a date that's workable for everybody. But I I wouldn't base whether or not we have a meeting on whether or not they have any interest in having a meeting. I think the public has an interest in the meeting.
As far as the county commissioners, I haven't been contacted by, you know, any commissioners at this point for any meet and greet here in Sunland Lake.
Okay. Well, let's focus on then the supervisors for our board.
And you should try to make it where everybody can be here. I know, it's just.
Yeah.
We're with them, but don't.
Yeah.
If they can't make it, they can't make it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll do our best.
If if they want to be on the board, I would hope that they would want to meet with the public.
And to my understanding, that the four candidates are not on the August primary. This is for the November ballot.
It is the November ballot.
Correct.
They won't be on the August primary.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, that gives us a little more time then. Any other board to board? Okay. I would suggest we take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene for the workshop. We're going to go ahead and start the workshop. I was hoping Tanya would be back. We're going to start with a presentation, I believe, from Billy Casper and golf. No? From Omar?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll start with Omar.
So this is workshop, budget workshop number two. We'll go ahead and just start with the summaries, kind of get a overview of what we're presenting now in comparison to budget number one and the changes. And then we'll jump into the golf fund, general fund, and utility fund after. So I want to go ahead and just start off on page one and two.
Can you get a little closer to your mic, Omar?
In your books. So for page one, the total proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is $11,055,000, 150. Page two kind of gives us a better breakdown as to how much money each fund is either making or losing in the cumulative total. So for the first budget workshop, we came in with a proposed deficit of $94,210 for the proposed budget. For workshop number two, we actually have an excess of $385,000 for this proposed budget. So let's look at each fund individually and see where, how we get to that 385. If we go down the general fund column, we'll see that the general fund is at a deficit, including golf and golf capital, of $185,000 at the very bottom. For this workshop, the golf fund is coming in with a zero subsidy budget, and then the general fund picks up the capital, so there's no capital expenditures. So it's a zero across the board at the bottom. And then the utility fund actually has an excess or surplus of $570,000. So the net effect of the 570 positive and the negative 185 gives you a net positive of 385 total that would be available for spending or savings at the board's discretion. So we could either allocate that to capital projects or put it in the year of capital improvement fund for a future year. The left-hand column shows our estimated actual projection for this year. It looks like we were, we are going to have a net loss this year of $250,000. The year before that, we had a net loss of $630,000. So in the last two years, we've lost $800,000 of reserves in operations. Does anyone have any questions on each fund and kind of the, where it falls in terms of net income or loss?
Just.
$200,000 is this year's projected loss?
Yeah.
$600,000 was last year's actual loss. So we did a better loss, if you want to look at it that way, yes. We're losing less money this year than we did last year. Fiscal year, we run from October through September 30th. Okay?
The the numbers that we're using here to get to the 385 are based on the increases that were discussed?
So this proposal, proposal number two does include the recreation rate proposal. It includes a golf zero subsidy. It includes the changes that we made to some of the capital items, like we did include the three-year golf cart buyout proposal. We removed all of the deer run renovation projects, and we removed all the recreation projects until we get done with all the master planning for both of those items.
Okay.
So as we go through each fund, we'll kind of go into more detail as to what was taken out, what was changed and adjusted to get to these new numbers.
And the the new page that we got on, on 15, increased what appears to be the membership revenue by about $18,000 over what was being used before. Would that $18,000 affect this 385 positively or not at all?
No. So the net effect of that, Mike and I kind of discussed this. So the spreadsheet shows a $1,083 in revenue projection. That's with exactly that membership, paying a full amount, 100% of their membership. Now, we do offer discounts if you pay in cash. So taking all those net effects, maybe someone dropping off or changing a category, we believe the 165 is a better cumulative number than the full 183.
Right. There's also, in their membership program, they they can take a medical leave. So we have several medical leaves a year that that offers them a discount.
I understand there's a lot of things that can affect that. What I'm trying to figure out is what's in the budget.
Right. The membership proposed in this budget is the same as the last one. The difference between page 15 and in the actual budget is, is the actual budget allows for that contingency of.
Or for the $18,000 now.
For the other stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go ahead and switch over to page four. We've adjusted the five-year capital as well to show, kind of based off all the capital projects that we have now, where we're going to fall in line and how our reserves are reflecting. So once again, this this current year shows the $240,000 projected loss. For 2021, this budget has an excess of 385. And then with the removal of every single large capital project, which was the district office renovation, the deer run irrigation project. I know there's something else that was pretty large in there. All the recreation projects of new playgrounds. We're now showing 494 positive. After that, 631, 700,000, and then 958. So this budget looks completely different as far as five-year, long-term capital planning than we did in proposal number one, which was in a deficit all the way across the board in the amount of 500,000 average every year. So different perspective, different look at things on this one. Obviously, the big difference is we show a capital allowance of 1.3 million in comparison to the first workshop only had a capital allowance of 900,000. So there's a $400,000 difference in either added revenue or expenses being cut to get to that $400,000 difference. Any questions on page four?
We're not doing anything major.
Correct. That does not include anything major. So pages five through, I want to say, five through nine show you just some different options. If we were going to try and do, let's say, a loan option, which we've discussed in the past, to accomplish some of these projects. You have a couple of different tiers. We've done it for 1.75 million, a couple of options at 3 million, and then one option for 4.5 total. If we include that, you know, annual allowance, it will change these numbers quite drastically as well.
Right. So so the bottom line is that the page four gives us kind of a, a general operating view without doing any major projects.
Correct.
The reality is we'll probably do some major projects. It's just a matter of whether we'll use capital or borrow to do more major projects or, or what we do. So we'll make that decision at a later point. But this is showing that we are actually able to do our routine maintenance and and operations without having to continually tap into our reserves.
Correct.
So that we can use our reserves to do those big projects on a priority basis. Okay.
So if there's no questions on the summary, I think we'll just go ahead and jump into the golf fund, which is page 10.
All right, supervisors. So at the last, at the first budget meeting discussion, I know the, the board had come to the direction to ask Billy Casper to present what a zero subsidy budget might look, might look like. So we obviously looked through many different ways that we could accomplish this. But in doing so, we wanted to make sure that we could accomplish that goal, but we also wanted to make sure it was something that was sustainable. I mean, we didn't want to put together a proposal where we could get to zero budget for one year and two years and then find us in a worse situation year three and so on. So now, you know, with the experience of of the team that's behind me and some other properties that that utilize this, this is the proposal that we devised. So we felt that to to get the golf operation to a zero subsidy budget, the biggest opportunity for revenue would be through green fees. And that would be revenue that we could get to the bottom line. So we we propose that we would need more available prime time tee times in order to achieve that goal. Now, I I just want to press the, the notion that this zero budget is not necessarily a year-one budget, especially in the world crisis that we're in now. This actual proposed budget here would be more like a year-two or year-three budget to actually get to zero. Now, if if we decide, if the board decides that they like this direction and they would like to move in this direction, we'll obviously need to make some adjustments and figure out where we're comfortable at as far as as a loss. out where we're comfortable at as far as, as a loss for, for year one. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't try absolutely as hard as possible to, to get there, but... All right, so I'm sure you read in my cover letter, the basic proposal is, and just so the, the, the public, I'm not sure if they have seen this or not. So the general proposal is, is to have, on a daily basis, from October first through April thirtieth, we would have one private member course daily, and we would have one public course daily. Now, what that would do is, it would offer on the public course, we would then be able to have some primetime tee times, which would be kind of like the nine-to-noon area in wintertime that we could sell to the public, and we would be able to get a better rate for those. It also allows on, on the, on the private side, the membership would actually get to enjoy a fully private course in season without having to play behind any public players. Pace of play would be better. Now, they will have, in my research, they, they may have to adjust the time of day they play on certain days. I don't think, I think a lot of days will run without any difference mostly, but there are some days that are busier than others that, you know, we may have to adjust what time of day we play, but we would be able to, you know, circumvent as many of those as possible. But that's definitely the, the basis of the assumptions going through this. Now, also in there, it doesn't mean that a member couldn't play on the public course. They would, they would just have, they would be restricted to only two days in advance. So basically, we would get, on that course, we would be able to book the public first. So in the event that there is openings, they would still be able to play there if they so choose. And the courses would alternate, so it would be like odds and evens. So you wouldn't be, you know, deer run wouldn't be the private course every day all through season. They would get to still play both courses as much as they, as much as they want to or as, as much as it would allow. As I presented to you guys one-on-one in my research, I really feel that, for the most part, Tuesday through Friday, we would be able to accommodate all member play on one course. Mondays in season, there would be about six Mondays that are, would be relatively tight trying to get all those players on one course. Now, that's the assumption that we have the same amount of member play as we did this year, which is up several rounds. I suspect that member rounds are going to be down next year, so that problem may not actually arise, but Mondays is definitely the busiest member day when we're in season.
Why do you believe member rounds will be down?
The overall membership is going to decrease. There's, there's going to be less, on page fifteen, there's going to be less total members. A good chunk of those were some of the fifty percent off members that won't rejoin, deaths. Not to mention, this, the, the pandemic is going to affect us this season, one way or the other. To the severity, we don't know yet. It could be to the absolute extreme where we only see sixty to seventy percent of our membership even come. Obviously, the, the, the high side of that would be if we saw ninety to a hundred percent of them come, that would be fantastic, but I'm sure there will be a slight decrease in membership rounds, and you'll see that in that proposal as well. Obviously, there's going to be exception for tournaments. We're not proposing of canceling or restructuring any member tournaments or public tournaments. There will be exceptions to the rules, so if there's big MGA tournaments that we normally have, we propose to operate them as normal. Obviously, there could be the possibility where, you know, we have the two-day events where those tournaments play on the same course both days. You know, I don't see why we can't be flexible enough to, to make all those happen as they are. So I don't, I don't plan on disrupting the membership too much in this, in this proposal, but I'm sure, you know, we'll, we'll be hearing from, from them here shortly as to their thoughts. I just would ask the board, would you like to go through the proposed membership rates first, or would you like to go through the proposed public possibility of increases?
Well, I, I think the first thing I would like is for you to clarify this change to provide public and private on opposite days, odds and evens. How much extra revenue are you anticipating that's going to generate?
So, all the assumptions in, that I propose in this budget are, are proposed as non-affected by the pandemic. So the proposal is, in that timeframe, and again, this could be two to three years down the road, is an extra two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in public green fee revenue. It also includes, you know, obviously, if, if there's more public here, you'll see an increase in beverage cart sales, some food sales, driving range sales, pro shop sales, all of those will increase as well, and those are in the proposed budget as well. Does that answer your question?
I'm going to reverse myself because this is, this is a big change, so I would like to hear what the public has to say about this proposed change. So, any public comment in that regard?
Sally Sunderland, member and golf member. I have a question about the private course. What about the groups that have outsiders and everything else? Which course are they playing on if they're in a group?
So the, the proposed thing is that all member groups, the ones that operate on a daily basis, they, those groups will be on the private course. Now, they would, they would include the, a guest of a member, so if you had, it would be a member group, and I know there's residents that play in those groups, and they would obviously still be able to play as a guest of a member. If it came down to a situation where availability was, was being limited on certain days, we would probably have to cross that bridge when we got there and say, you know, members would have first preference over, say, a, a resident guest. But we're not looking to upset the apple. In this proposal, we, we want to make this as easy as possible. Obviously, you know, the board has asked for a big, a big change in revenue, so we have, obviously, we have to make a big change in operation. Now, we, we're not looking to say you have to be a member and only members. If you want to bring a guest to play on the private course, then that's your prerogative. We're not kicking them out. We're not trying to upset everybody's lives as least as possible while still trying to operate with our financial goals as presented by the board. Does that answer your question, Sally?
Yeah.
So you're saying if it's a group that normally plays, but it has members and residents, is that, are they good to go?
They would be considered the guests of the member as any other private course how they operates. I know Sally runs a group, Joe runs a group. They have, they have residents that play in those groups.
But you're saying you could affect it?
If, if, I mean, that, that could be up for interpretation by the board as well. I don't, I feel that there's enough room. Those groups, there should be, some days are harder than others, but there should be room to allow them to come. I think we should probably set the president that in, in the fact that if availability is getting low, then we should restrict it to a member-first policy, but I don't think it, you, I don't think you need to throw a blanket over and say that guests of members cannot play with a member group, because I, I don't see that being an issue all the time. There's only about a six or eight-week window where it's going to be really tight. November, October, November, December, and late March and April is not, there's going to be plenty of tee times still available on the course. I don't, I don't see it being an issue.
I, I would assume that a, if the members are playing the private course, a member guest would play with the member on the member course.
But, but he's saying there's a lot of groups that have members and residents. I'm not going to say there's a lot, some of the groups have both. And what he's saying is that it, it could arise where he would have to say the residents couldn't play because he doesn't have enough open times for them to play.
Yeah, I would consider that, you know, it's, you know, an advantage of being a member of the club. But I don't, I don't, Mr. Herrick, I don't think it, I, I don't think it's going to be as, that drastic until we get to the really deep part of the season, which would depend...
When everybody wants to play.
When everybody wants to play.
So it is an issue, or can be an issue, and it's during primetime when everybody has their groups here.
And, and those residents, if they want to play golf, there, there's a whole nother golf course that they can book, you know, so that there's...
But it's not part of the...
It's, it may or may not be part of the group.
Not part of that group that plays a specific game or whatever the case may be.
No, and I, and I understand that obviously change is, is not going to be easy.
I see.
But, and then it's up to the board, if, if, if this is the financial goals you want to meet, there's going to have to be some sacrifice somewhere. So somebody's going to be happy and somebody's not going to be happy. It's, and there's still going to be some unknowns too, so...
Charles Shields, resident. How can we, how can we use the word private? I was told a long time ago, we can't be a private...
The course wouldn't become private, it would be the type of operation. So, so it's not that we're saying that this course is private and this course is public. We're just saying on this day, the members are going to use this course, and the public will use this course, and the next day it'll be the other way around. So it's a, it's not truly private, it's just a term.
It may not be truly, but I would refrain from using that.
Fair, fair comment.
The other, the other thing is, is I run a group, and there's probably some people behind me that run groups, and I prefer to play in the afternoon. There's other groups that prefer to play in the morning. I, I am not going to stand for being told that I can't play and that I can't schedule my group like I've always got. I think this splitting of courses is a dumb idea, real dumb, and I think you'll pay for it in the long run.
What's the downside, Charlie? Everybody's against it, but nobody has a reason. Ask for one reason, because it's a change?
I think if you, your afternoon group, if you want to play on one particular course, I don't think we have a problem with the afternoon groups, the ones later in the day. So it's prime two times in the morning we're trying to get that higher dollar from, and so that the afternoon ones, I'm sure we can figure all that out.
When we go all the way back in history when we brought in Kitten, okay? I've said this before to the board. The one thing that we said was is we will never violate the groups, okay? And you come in here, you can do a lot of things, but you will not violate the groups. The groups are what bring people from all around that play here. That's what makes Sun and Lake, okay? Otherwise, hell, we could go play Pinecrest, and that may be a...
Charlie, Charlie, all the afternoon groups play the same course now, so what's the difference?
When I came here three years ago, everybody said this is why people come here, is because of the golf course. And I've enjoyed the golf course, and I don't know if you figured this in, Mike, but every action creates a reaction, and there'll be members, like myself, look at the value that I have here and may decide to go someplace else. I have a car, it's easy to get here, but I never have been able to drive to a course. I've always gotten a car and drove to a course, and I'm telling you, these changes may change. I'm just one person, but not only me, but other members will look at this and say, hey, this isn't what I want. I didn't come here for this.
Louise Parker, Mandavia Drive.
Get closer to the point.
Louise Parker, Mandavia Drive. I'm a member and a resident. I would request, because I'm having a real tough time with only a two-day notice, that I could make a reservation on another course that I'm a member of. I would request at least a week because it feels to me that an outsider has more benefits than I do after I've already paid upfront funds to my course. I'm proud to be a member of this course, but two days is a little small window. You can't plan, and if you can't get on the course, then it is going to create havoc. So I would request maybe a week instead of two days to be able to go on the other public course, if you will. And will you be changing all of your marketing brochures and website to indicate this change if it goes through? Because I believe that everything currently says that you have a twenty-way, twenty-one day online tee time reservation for two courses.
I'm, I'm sure there would be plenty of changes to, to marketing if, if, you know, the board decides that this is a viable option for them. I just want to remind you that you, you would still have twenty-one days advanced booking for the, for the member, for the member course.
Yep.
And, and, and to answer your question, I mean, it, it, it can be a, a topic of discussion if, if we want to change the proposed two days to anything other than two days. It, it, we, we'd be something that we can discuss. I'm not, I'm not sure if that would, yeah, I'm not sure if that would undermine what we're really trying to do in this proposal or not, but we can certainly discuss that.
That would be wonderful. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Dave Halbig, resident. I, I think, I think doing this is only going to impact the groups. Some of the, some of the big groups are going to get displaced, and it's going to be a nightmare, and I don't think it's going to be controlled. You've got a difficult time controlling stuff anyway, and, and this is going to be, I think it's going to be a mess to try to do that. And I know it's all revenue-driven, and I don't know if your dynamic pricing has anything to do with it. You say you're going to drive another quarter of a million dollars' worth of revenue by doing this. I don't see how you're going to do that. And while, while I'm up here, and, and I don't want to come back again, I got a question on the numbers that you show for membership, not on the rates necessarily, is the numbers of members. Now, it looks like you're going to carry forward with this fifty percent proposed, fifty percent full promotional thing like you did last year. I don't know if anybody's done any, any research as to how many of these people are coming back, but, but I'm looking at the total number of, of members, and I'm thinking you're missing your revenue here a little bit because last year you had, or this year, you've got forty-five, forty-five members on this promotion. I don't know where those people are going to go, or how many of them are going to go into one of these other categories, but you're showing every other category where they might go, you show a reduction in the forecast for next year rather than an increase, and you show a total reduction of thirty-eight members. I don't know where you got that number. I think that number's low. I don't see how in the world you're going to have thirty-eight less members when you got forty-five of these people on this fifty percent full family promotion that are going to flip into something else. Most of them are not, they're going to just walk away. And also, one more question. Last year, you broke the rules by letting the summer members that were members join this promotion. Is that going to happen again, or you're going to follow the guidelines that you set forth and not allow that?
On, on that question, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to. The summer, the summer membership...
Well, if you had, if you had a current membership, you could not take advantage of this fifty percent full promotion.
Correct.
But last year, there was several summer memberships that were currently summer memberships, they were allowed to flip into this fifty percent full promotion.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure that, that it was decided at that time that that would be, that the summer members would be allowed to do that.
I don't think it was decided by the board, I think somebody just made that decision in, in the pro shop, and that's what happened.
I, that, that decision would not be made at the pro shop level.
You can research that and find out that that's, that's what happened.
We'll have to look into that. I'm, I'm not sure. I wasn't in that discussion at this time last year, but that would absolutely not be a pro shop level decision.
Okay. Anyway, as far as this splitting these courses up, I think it's going to displace some of the, some of the member groups, and I don't think it's a very good idea, because I don't think it's going to be controlled very well. And I don't see how in the world it's going to drive more, more revenue. It might drive more revenue if some of these numbers are, are more realistic, because I think that thirty-eight deficit for forecast next year on total memberships is, is pretty low. Thank you.
Virgil Elliott, resident and member. Mike, when you talk about two days out to make tee time, you've got, I know at least three ladies groups.
Hmm.
That play between nine and ten-thirty. So, what are you going to do to them when you go to this and your prime times are in there? You got, I know you got a nine hole group on Tuesday and Friday.
Hmm.
And Karen McCullough's got a group also that she plays on Friday.
Okay.
And there's probably others out there.
I, I think what, what, what the public hasn't seen is, is the stats that, that led us to where we're at. So, at, in peak season, in February, on, on Tuesdays, we average a hundred and sixty member rounds, okay? So, the suggested tee format would be, for something like that, would be tee times. We could probably still do the reverse shotguns like we normally do. Um, but a hundred and sixty member rounds on one course with a maximum tee sheet of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight, that leaves a hundred and, room for a hundred and twenty extra people. Um, so that Tuesday issue would not be an issue. On other days, Wednesday, Wednesday in February, we averaged two-hundred-and-thirty member rounds. Doug Coe's group is the largest one in the shotgun. If he had a hundred and forty-four in a one o'clock shotgun, we could do an eight-thirty or nine o'clock shotgun in the morning for, for anybody else that wants to, which would be the ladies groups, anybody else that wants to play, there's plenty of room. Thursdays, we average two-hundred-and-four member rounds, there's still eight, room for eighty more. Fridays, a hundred and seventy-five, there's room for a hundred more member rounds. The only one, and, and just, just for clarification, in this proposal, we didn't, we left Saturday and Sunday alone, so Saturday couples will go untouched. Mondays, however, in prime season, there's two-hundred-and-ninety-seven member rounds, okay? That is where we will see an issue for those six weeks where those groups get very, very large. That is the only day that I see that will be really troublesome and might upset the apple cart with us when the members get to play. I think on pretty much every other day, we can accommodate, to a certain degree, within reason of where the members want to play and who they want to play with.
You talked about a hundred and sixty playing on Tuesday, but what about the times that they're going to have to take? That's the thing, they, they got certain times they want to play within a window.
Sure.
And you tell them that they can't as members, then the, I know what's going to happen. You're going to lose a couple of members, I know of one.
I just, I just want to make a comment, and I, um, I'm trying to listen, I, I, I'm grateful for the public and hear what they have to say, I really am. But I went into this not liking any part of this proposal, so, and I got to tell you that, I, I don't want any of it. Um, and I just want that known, I mean, I don't know how the board is going to vote, but I don't like a six percent raise, and I don't like having two courses with two different groups, and I want it to be the way it is. And so, I'm going to try to be good and listen, but you've got to know that I'm not at all in favor of Mike's proposal here.
Sure, and just, I, I just want to reiterate that this was, this was asked of us from, from the board to propose a way to get here. Billy Casper is not necessarily proposing that we have to do this. Uh, it is, you know, it is going to be a, a board decision as the direction that we go. Uh, we'll provide you with as much information as I've obtained in the last three or four weeks coming up with this. Um, but again, it's, it's, it's up to the board to discuss and decide.
Jim Bastis, uh, recent resident member. Um, we just recently bought a home and moved here full-time, and we did that based on what is offered. Uh, we, we've rented here, uh, we've gone out and bought a golf cart, we've embraced the whole concept that, that is presently in place. Um, I worry about the perception, Joe talks about reasons. Uh, I worry about the perception going forward, once the general public or prospective members find out that the course is now restricting, uh, play, uh, and that there's a danger that member play is possibly at risk. So, the perceptions, uh, could cause issues. The other issue from a perception is, uh, the fact that potential home buyers or new home buyers, Herrick's, Hornig, rather, his homes that he's putting up, et cetera. When the public, we talked about this, Larry Hudson talked about it while he was here earlier, about Sun and Lake District trying to increase revenue, and that one of the things that they could do is to encourage new member golf members because of their upper income capacity, that that was one way, selling more homes, uh, to potential members would be a benefit for tax revenue, uh, the, the land is off, the, the, is, is now owned and, and, and revenue's coming in. Um, competition, I think one of the things that I find is, uh, I know dur, even during the season, Highlands North, for instance, will offer you two beers, or a beer and two hot dogs, whatever it is to get you to play, and everybody, all of the public courses here are discounting their play. And so, I'm not sure the, the sea will part and all of this public play will take place. I don't know if there's enough people, uh, players in the Sebring area that would, uh, come here, especially, I don't know what the rates would be for general play. Um, so I, 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 also, as far as the general public increasing the use of the restaurant, and, uh, I can tell you right now, the whole season, I see the member groups not coming in to buy the beer or the meals. They're in the parking lot with the backs of their trucks and SUVs wide open, drinking their own beer. You never see them inside the restaurant. So, in addition to the fifty percent of the members that don't use the restaurant, there's certainly a larger percentage of the general public that plays here not coming in.
Thank you.
Mark Camp, Mark Camp, resident and member. Um, I'm only going to address the actual letter here, and you might be covering some additional information later on, and, and so if I say some things that might be covered later on, I apologize upfront. The board did ask at the last meeting, I believe it was, when Tony Cianci was here, to come back with something that would be more balanced, a zero subsidy. And I think that's what Michael attempted to do, but where I see a little bit of a concern with this proposal is, number one, we had a six percent increase proposed, I realize it's not approved, a six percent increase on our membership fees, and in some cases, upward to ten or eleven percent. And I went back ten years on membership fees, never, ever in those ten years did we even get close to a six percent increase. Now, granted, it, it hasn't happened, it hasn't been approved, I get it. I think that going down to one course could create a lot of problems. Where, where I see some is you have a lot of member-member, the MGA, the WGA, the LGA, and so on, and they have tournaments, they have one- and two-day tournaments on the courses. Now, not everybody plays in those member-members and things of that nature. So, what do you do with all of those other players out there that want to play but aren't going to play in the member-member? Do you say, well, you can't play on this golf course because it's now dedicated to the member-member? Okay? I, I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to shoot holes through this, but I'm just trying to bring up a couple ideas. You know, you talk about the fifty percent membership. The, I, I think it was a great program, quite frankly, I think it was pretty successful. Uh, my understanding is, and I don't have the numbers and I don't have the privilege of sitting down with, you know, many of the members here or the staff, but I understand it was somewhere around forty-five new members. Now, I don't know what the retention of that will be, I've seen your numbers in the, in the, in the paperwork here, but at the same time, I haven't seen an increase in our total membership, and that, Michael said, is because a lot of people are dropping out, and this and that. We're certainly dealing with the COVID, we have no control over that. He's looking at multiple years to get to this zero, and I also understand that. Now, if you put one course dedicated to the outside play and you have dynamic pricing, does that mean that these rates that are, let's say, fifty dollars, are now going to be dwindled down to twenty-five because you want to get the revenue dollars? So, I think there's got to be some control there. Uh, I'm a little concerned about that. I, I'm not, I, I look at this whole program as not good for our members, quite frankly. I see it good for Casper, okay, but I don't see it good for our members at all. And the biggest gap I see in here is, the golf course is making almost its revenue number, and the drain on Sun and Lakes is Casper or golf operations and food and beverage. Food and beverage is the biggest drain on us. So, why isn't in this program something addressing a promotion to say, we're going to increase food and beverage revenues, and this is how we are going to attempt to do it? Whatever that plan is, but I didn't see it in here. Now, you might have some, all I see is members being somewhat penalized and trying to generate all that revenue on the golf side of the operation. And that, that's, that's not the whole thing. I mean, you got, I think it's about, based on your chart, about a fifty-eight percent, uh, labor burden on the restaurant. Uh, maybe there's some places we could cut expenses there, or increase revenues the way. I mean, that is, labor burden is where it's going to be the biggest drain on your operation. So, that's just my thoughts. I appreciate your time, good luck, all the power to you.
Thanks.
At the meeting, when we asked Casper to come up with a zero budget, I was under the impression that they were coming back with ideas on how to maybe attract tournaments or that they would have a, a day event. There was never in my mind that we were going to go to one course or a private course. Uh, I'm very disappointed, and I've told Casper this. I think this is totally opposite of what I thought we were going to get. We were going to get pieces of giving up our course for maybe a day, but we could make X and help our revenue in that respect. But to go to giving up one course during our complete primetime was never what I envisioned that they were going to come back with. Um, I can't, I can't support this either. I, I, it's not where, it can't be on the backs of the members to make the revenue. That's all I've got to say.
Before you go, um, you know, you got to remember that this was a two-hundred-and-sixty to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollar jump from where we were at to zero.
Yes.
Now, if we want to make smaller changes and accomplish smaller agendas, we can go with, with portions of that and, and go where you're, where you're looking for, but to find two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars on seven more Saturdays with tournaments is, is not feasible to get to zero. Now, if you want to, if you want to start to move that number down, um, slowly or gently, we can adopt as much or as little as this as, as we want, and we could move things around and do things a little bit different to accomplish a smaller goal. But remember, this is a, a large goal that we were trying to accomplish, so it takes a large, um, difference of, of, of being made. Uh, and to address, uh, Mr., a couple of Mr. Camp's things, um, just wanted to, to let the public know that the financials are broken out with the restaurant and part of that labor. Part of that labor is, is, um, sales and marketing labor and G and A labor. So, i, if you want to look at it in that fashion, that's okay. A typical, um, food and beverage operation, uh, for a course of our style usually operates at anywhere between forty and sixty percent labor cost. In a true breakout of the restaurant and the restaurant's only labor, we operate at the low end of that, around forty percent. Um, it's just a little misleading there in the financial, so I just wanted to let the, the public know that. And also, as far as the food and beverage operation goes, uh, we proposed over a hundred thousand dollars more revenue, uh, than, than in our first budget, and is now included in the second budget as well. So, over a hundred thousand dollars more than any, any of our best years that we've ever done in the restaurant. So, that entails a huge, that entails a huge change of, of trying to find extra revenue, because you got to imagine our average, uh, cover prices last year was eleven dollars, so if you do the math, that's a lot of people we got to get to walk through the door. Um, and also, you know, if we want to find two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of bottom-line revenue in the restaurant, that means we're going to have to find two-point-six million dollars more in revenue, because of all the cost of goods and labor percentages, only about ten, ten percent of that hits the bottom line. And the best year we've ever done in the restaurant is one-point-two. So, to try to go from one-point-two to three-point-eight in two to three years or twenty years is going to be extremely difficult. Um, it's obvious that, that the revenue generation needs to be developed through golf, as that has a extremely higher rate to hit to the bottom line. Uh, and again, it, you know, this is, this is a board-level decision, we can accept as much or as little as this is possible. Um, thanks. Bye.
I appreciate the effort, Mike. I understand you're particularly, you know, a lot of this work, of course, and I appreciate that, but I, I still stand on the fact that there's nothing in there with the rest of that, because, uh, all the rest of this, thank you.
Bill Norcross, resident, seventeen years, and I have a, quite an investment in the community here. Take a look at seventeen years, it's over three-hundred thousand dollars in taxes, fees, memberships, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a house, so it's a vested interest I have here, and that's why I'm here. But I tell you, uh, I'm getting a little confused here when the, the zero subsidy budget by, submitted by Casper's recommendation to basically reduce the subsidy that the district gives to the golf course, is that correct?
Correct.
That would be the goal, yeah.
Huh?
That would be the goal.
All right. You know, when you come here, the chart originally said that recreation will be provided by the district, and therefore, a percentage of our assessment of seven hundred dollars goes to recreation. I understand that. Now, if we didn't have a restaurant here that is, I consider a white elephant right now. I hope it, I hope it works out, I hope people come in, but right now, philosophy and somebody mentioned they go to a different golf course, they get two-for-ones, or they get specials or something like that. Now, you want answers to, uh, our suggestions, and, well, that's a couple of them. To attract people here, when you put up a member-public sign, you're reducing people coming here because they figure they won't be able to get a tee time, even though it says public, and it's, it's a, it's a real big hassle, as far as I'm concerned. But the, this zero subsidy budget is, I, if we didn't have this white elephant, we wouldn't have a problem, would we? Because golf is paying for itself. It's, it's not quite even budget, but it is making money. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Well, I don't know what that means, but I tell you what, when I talk to other people and they say, members of the board, they say, the golf course actually makes a little money. And you say, no. Well, okay, fine. That person is wrong. Fake news, right? What happens in the summertime when you, you have one course available and you have maintenance and everything else? That's a problem to think about. What are we gonna do then? Do you have member time in the morning and public in the afternoon? Who knows? I don't know. It seems to me that right now it's working to an extent. I mean, we have a reduction in play and the play is fast. We're playing in three hours, three hours and 15 minutes. It's excellent. So I don't know what's gonna happen when you have two golf courses. Uh, I don't think people, residents here will like it. And I'm dead set against it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I don't look at the restaurant as a white elephant. I was in heaven over that lobster dinner. I don't belong here because it's, I can get a hot dog for 50 cents. I look at the totality of our amenities, the totality of the thieves, the totality of this community, not the people coming from Avon Park using our facility. I think they should pay more than we do. We pay for this location, this facility. This is a luxury we have to be a member, to be safe, to have clean, you know, all the amenities, exercise, the library, everything. To me, it's the totality. And I think the restaurant, this, especially this summer, I think we did fabulous under the circumstances.
Thank you.
I have one more issue I'd like to address. It's concerning the restaurant. I don't know why we just don't close that area where the bar is, put doors in there and call it members only and charge members an assessment, okay? Use any number you want. Say, say a hundred dollars. I know I spend more than that, okay? But use it or lose it. That would bring every member into that clubhouse, okay? Because they could either pay the, the user fee, if you want to call it that, or not. But that would, that would help the restaurant pay for itself.
I, I hear you. And let me-
We were told one time, let me just further say, I was told one time that you can't do that. But yes, you can.
Okay.
Absolutely, you can.
Thank you. Let me, let me just clarify, if there's any other public comment on the concept of the split golf. That's really what I asked for public comment on, and most of you have been very good on that topic. So I'm, we'll deal with the other issues another time. I'm really looking for comments on that aspect of the proposed.
David Ashley, resident. We've been here four years and I just want to say that about the second year or two years ago, we had Irma come through and it left us in a mess. And two gentlemen back here, Kenny and Jim, we worked three days, almost like from sunup to sundown to clear it off so we could play on these golf courses. And members love their course. This is our home and they take care of it. I know we need outside play. This is just a little kick on outside play. They come and pay, but I, I see some outside players that think, well, I'm paying 45, 50 bucks, I'm gonna do $45 in damage, you know? I'd like to go over and, you know, punch them and say, hey, this, this, you're here kind of almost like being invited here. Uh, also, there's four gentlemen behind me that run groups. I probably wouldn't know half of you people if it wasn't for these groups that I play golf with. And I'm kind of on everything that they say. There's gonna be a lot of guys like me that kind of, without the groups, you know, I wouldn't know how many of these guys fish. Uh, the other thing, maybe to what I want to say about these guys here, if somebody could tell me the increase of cost of living from one year to the next, I would say, go ahead. You can increase my fee, whatever the cost of living is, that that's what is going to take the run. So there's some kind of figure in there. I know Mark likes figures, that I would have, I'm not, some people don't curve out, you know, they really want to fight the increase, but if there's a cost of living figure, I'm all for it. I, I want to, my address is gonna be on my obituary here, so you guys are gonna have to live with me one way or another. But these guys here mean a lot to me back here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to address the cost of living increase. Typically at our, our member clubs, um, every year there is an increase of dues, anywhere from 1 to 3%. And that's usually in line with cost of, of living increases. Um, a lot of clubs, we have to get it approved, you know, or an increase in dues approved by a board. Some of them we don't. Uh, those are usually easier to get the increases through on. Um, but yes, you, you are absolutely right. Typically, that's what, what is done. I, I think last year there might've been a 1% increase in dues, but I also know there's been numerous years that there hasn't been any increase in dues. So that's probably why maybe the 6% that people are hearing seems like a, a little bit of a, a sting. Um, and then for, for a member who's paying $4,500 a year right now, I think the number is two, a $240 increase um, at, at 6%. So um, that's, that's what, how typically we do it at, at the member clubs.
Are all the other amenities working at a zero subsidy?
Nothing is currently working at a zero subsidy. That's what we're looking at.
The way I look at it, we need to provide a little bit of subsidy in the thing. Granted, zero subsidy would be a nice though.
Yeah. Well, the, the challenge is to continue to subsidize. We have to look at where, where the income is going to come from, from the subsidy, which is going to be assessments. And we, we don't want to do a big assessment increase either. So we're trying to figure out how to balance it all out.
True.
So just-
But I pay fees, the assessment and whatever, and it pays for the swimming pool and the weight room and the volleyball, not volleyball, the shuffleboard and the tennis and the racquetball and blah, blah. And I don't use them.
Understood.
I'm here for the golf, but I don't mind paying that part of it because I know that's part of the, of the deal with the district.
Okay.
So I think zero is a good goal, but I don't think it ought to be the hard driver that we're looking at right now.
I hear you.
So getting back to the budget and kind of to what Virgil was getting to, this current budget with a zero subsidy shows a $427,000 loss in the golf club fund. 427,000. With the subsidy, if we go back to how it was before in proposal one, it was a $700,000 loss to, from the golf fund. Now, when you take into consideration assessments and everything else that goes into cumulative, into the general fund, with this proposal, the general fund as a whole with golf is still in the deficit, $185,000. If we put back the subsidy, now we're almost up to $400,000 in loss with the general fund and golf. So right now, across the board, with assessments and golf and everything as a cumbersome, we are in the hole, $400,000. And that's why we're proposing some of the recreation rates to change a little bit. And it's, it's, once again, it's a good standpoint that we're looking at this entire picture because we need to try and figure out how we can balance. And this doesn't even include any major projects such as deer run irrigation. It doesn't include the district office. So we're at a point where we need to make some difficult decisions on how to at least balance and account for some savings to do these projects. Cause for a long time, we've been able to pull from reserves like we did last year for 600,000 and this year for 300,000, but we can only do that for so long without doing something to balance the entire book as a whole.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not saying mess with the member. I'm just saying we need to look at it from a whole standpoint as what can we do with the members? What can we do with recreation? What can we do with assessments to make the whole picture complete? And this is just one option from, from the golf club, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's come up.
I'd like to bring this issue back to the board now. I've, in the process, heard from two board members who are dead set against it. I had mixed feelings going in. I asked you for some, what are, what are going to be the arguments against it? I heard some much better arguments today from the public. I would have a hard time supporting this split golf times on golf courses. Uh, I, I think we need to work at other solutions to get closer to a zero budget. Um, I don't know where Supervisor Branson is on this, but I'm, I'm not sensing that we're gonna move, move forward with this plan and we need to look at other options. Any thoughts?
If you're looking for the worst case, you should be happy. I mean, if you're the one o'clock shotgun on Tuesday now, there's no reason to think you won't be on one o'clock shotgun on Tuesday under this plan. No reason whatsoever.
I, I got, I got that, Joe. My, what I'm hearing is the concern is, uh, if there's a shotgun at nine o'clock in the morning, then I can't play until the afternoon on my course.
But that's the way it is now. You better go play the other course.
You can play the other golf course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you still can.
Well, except you can only reserve a limited amount of time in advance.
That can be adjusted.
Yeah. And-
I just think all the reasons that I'm hearing to not do it make no sense, but I'm obviously a minority.
Yeah, I, I, I just think that, I, I understand adjustments can be made, but the more adjustments you make, the more it defeats the purpose of, of getting this into a situation where we've got tee times we can sell. So I, you know, maybe, maybe the adjustment is that, you know, members can still book, but we only have a shotgun on one course so we can continue to do consecutive tee times with the knowledge that some of the consecutive tee times on the other course would be member times and some would be public times. Obviously, they-
Which is exactly how it is.
Well, they, cause the, the challenge, as I understand it, is that it's hard to, to get the public times because we have so many shotguns. And therefore consecutive times are a problem. So.
But if the course isn't full, they can join those shotmats.
Which is correct, which is not necessarily their preferable time. Uh, the number one, our, our number two, two top sellers of tee times are currently our advantage card members, which 90, I don't want to throw out a number, but a large percentage of those play on Sundays when there's very, very little member demand. Our number two tee time that we sell is Twilight because that's one of the most available tee times that we can sell throughout the week. It, it is, it is cheaper, but it's, it, it's the availability. Um, we-
We're, we're kind of through with public comment at this point on, on this issue. We'll, we'll get some more public comment on, on the golf budget before we're done. Anything else to add from the other board members? I mean, am I correct in assuming that we need to kill this idea?
Yes.
So, I, you know, we, we appreciate the effort and, and we're not saying give up on finding a way to get to a zero budget. We're just saying this isn't the way we're gonna do it.
Okay. So in that aspect, I will need direction from the board as to go back to budget proposed number one and how we would like to edit that. Um, or if, if you liked it as present, as presented, uh, but you know, we're, we're running close to July here and we need to, we need to have a direction to move forward, you know, fairly quickly, um, to resolve the budget. I think the membership rates, we could obviously get to a pretty better understanding where the board would like to go today, um, cause that may or may not be effective of how we operate. But before we leave, before we end this discussion, I definitely need some direction from the What is it you would like for me to present?
What is the cost of living for this past year?
He's gonna look that up.
I think it's one and a half, I think.
It is.
Do we want to bring up page 15? We're gonna look at that real quick. Are we talking about membership rates? Did you want to discuss that real quick?
I want to know what the cost of living has been for the past year.
Okay.
A key point I would want us to consider, if we're really limiting increases to cost of living, then we really need to be looking at doing the increases annually. Um, because if, if we skip a year, then we've missed part of the cost of living increase. So-
Understand.
And- Mr. Hattley, I, I think we have, Mr. Rhodes is here via Zoom and I think he would like to speak. Brian, can you hear us? Can he hear us?
He can hear us. But we can't hear him.
Are you muted on your end, Brian?
The cost of living went down 6% during 2019.
Thank you.
I got 2.8% for 2019 on, online. And in 2020 saying 1.6 for 2020.
2019 was 2.8?
Correct.
I stand corrected, that's the social security figure.
Oh, okay.
It's hard to do cost of living.
Are we gonna delegate him up?
Paul, call me, call me.
Quite better than my phone.
2%, 2% would give us, uh, our current rate is 4616, correct?
Correct.
On, on full member, full family? What's that result in? And 2% would be what, uh?
Hey, I don't know speaker.
90, $92, $93?
You said 2%?
Yes.
9233. So it'd be 470869.
I would be in 2% of the cost of living, 2.8.
Just threw out a figure, Joe.
3 would be 13849.
That would make more sense to me.
And what was the increase last year?
What was that?
What was our increase last year?
Last year, we had a 1% increase. You sure?
I don't know, I think it was one in most categories and two in something, two and something else.
Let me go back.
We're, are we getting Brian? Okay, so let's, let's let him speak.
So it's a 1%. Went from 4570 to 4616 where it is today.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, you can speak if you can.
Are we able to get Brian?
That's for- You should just have him call me and I'll, I'll say what he wants to say.
All right.
Yeah, over 80 was, 3.5% for over 80. Three and a half percent for over eighty. If you're, wow, you probably don't want me talking on your phone.
Now just hang up and see if you'll call David. Or David, you want to call him?
I'm calling him. Yeah, what would you like me to say?
Take care.
Input, yeah.
We'll have more public comment later, but not right away. We'll have more public comment later, but it won't be right away. We've got some other issues we're dealing with here.
Did you get it?
So where are we? We're in three percent?
Right.
Just for an explanation, we apologize for the delay and the technical problems, but Brian had hoped to be here today, but he's got a COVID issue in the family and he's quarantined.
I, I would like to propose a three percent increase for next year.
Okay, that's.
I support that. With the exception of the two.
Well, the board isn't leaving.
The over eighty and the over eighty-five.
So those would be, with the adjustments going from twenty-six percent down to the proposed twenty-four and the thirty-two point five, the over eighty family would be six and a half percent, and then the family over eighty-five would be seven point eight percent.
And what about your computer?
Increases.
Too much.
Which is about two hundred and thirty dollars a micro each.
I think you do the over eighty and the over eighty-five at two percent a year for three years. Get them where you want them.
So that's where, they're at twenty-six now. We're proposing to drop them down to twenty-four, which is a two percent drop. And then two and a half percent on eighty-five. So you want to go down to one percent? Problem is. Yeah, we're splitting, we're splitting it over three years now with that increase. But it's doubling the increase because you're going down two percent plus the three percent on top of that.
So the total increase would be what?
Six and a half percent for eighty and seven point eight percent for eighty-five.
It's too much.
It's two hundred and thirty bucks.
I don't think you want it over six percent.
I, I'll, I'll give the.
That's my opinion.
The full family's going up a hundred and thirty, and they would be going up two thirty.
I, I got the basis of what he said.
That's fine.
You want to go down more or?
Well, I, I just think a bigger bite you take tomorrow. I heard it's going to be the same.
Yeah.
What's a hundred and thirty across the board? Well, that's not fair to the.
Yeah, no, right off.
Five and three.
If you did five percent a year for three years, you'd be in the same place.
So if you drop it to like one and a half percent, doing the family over eighty to twenty-five, that's one seventy-three.
Get them to where you want them in three years, whatever that number is.
It'd be the two twenty, Joe. We're doing two percent every year for three years to get them back down to even. So it's a hundred dollars more for them for probably the next three years.
That's fine.
Okay.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, can we summarize what we just talked about, so we're?
Because I'm, I'm not following the, the last conversation though. I, I heard, I heard a motion to increase rates by three percent.
Three percent.
I don't know that I heard a second. Was there a second on increasing rates by three percent?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to raise rates by three percent. Now, there's an additional discussion going on about a change in that, so it's not an across-the-board three percent that's being recommended by Joe, but I'm not sure I'm following what's being recommended.
The over eighty, the over eighty-five are not where they need to be.
Right, correct.
So, so they would increase more than three percent to get them to where they?
We should increase them by more than three percent.
When you look at your spreadsheet now, everyone had six percent and they're at nine point six and ten point one.
Yep.
So when we drop it at three, it drops them down to six point five and seven point. So they're still, it's still the same process, it's just a lower number. So the full family over fifty is a hundred and thirty dollar increase. And then their increase is two hundred and twenty dollars. So they're paying an extra hundred bucks because we're dropping that percentage down two percent every year for the next three years to get them back in line.
See, we did that two years ago. Apparently it's not.
So can I propose that in the form of a amendment?
It's not going to go through. It was supposed to be three years.
We can't vote on this.
Now Joe's against that right now, it sounds to me like. They're supposed to be caught up this year with the parity at these increases. But, you know, I, I don't care, but it's just, you can't do stuff for, you can't propose stuff that's going to happen next year when you got two new board members, maybe. Because you're not going to tell the new board members what, what they want. I mean, you can't do that.
You can't vote on a motion in this format anyway. Doesn't matter.
Okay, so there, there's a motion and a second to go at three percent. There is a request. Well, I guess at this point, based on the motion, I'm confused as to what the motion maker intends as regards the eighties.
Okay, let me alter it. From a motion standpoint, I think it should be put at three percent in the budget so that we can look at that and maybe that's what we will approve for a budget. I'm, we've got to decide how to, how he's to proceed. Otherwise, we're never going to get this budget done. We've got to give him directions, in my opinion. Otherwise, we're just going to be here continually fighting about what it is that we're going to do.
Right, I.
And at three percent, I'm saying I can try to sell three percent. Cost of living was two point nine, three percent makes sense to me. I think that's a salable point. And I think he should put that in his budget and let's move on to see what that looks like at the end of the budget.
Okay, am, am I able to make a comment? I'm not sure of the rules.
Sure.
Whatever. Just talking with Brian, um, so, so talking with Brian, he, A, wanted to thank everybody for the input on, on the membership. But I think it was important for, for everyone to understand. I, I know there was a conver, a couple of people that said, it seems like, you know, as a member, what benefits do I get? If the public is going to have different benefits. And then the other one was, um, well, that was the main one, what are the benefits? Looking at the financials of it and looking at member rounds, how much, how much revenue and cart revenue we made from, from our memberships. The APR for a round of golf for a member on average, now everybody's a little bit different based on how many rounds they played, was eighteen dollars and some change. I don't know the exact number.
Eighteen thirty-nine.
Eighteen thirty-one. For the public, it was, now, these are just selling the, the Twilight times in the afternoon that I know everybody says is cheap. Those numbers were, were thirty-six dollars and some change, I think it's on there as well. So understanding that there is a big difference between what's being paid and understanding what the actual cost of, of a round of golf is has a lot to do with why, why there is, needs to be an increase in the membership. You know, it's, one of the comments, you know, me personally, that I heard was that this, this budget only helps Casper. It, it really doesn't because we're going to get yelled at for it, right? So it doesn't help us at all, um, for us, making sure that the members get what they want. That's always going to help us more than anything. It's going to be a much, a much better situation for us. But again, talking about why we came up with the numbers we came up with, looking at the data and seeing, uh, what's being paid. We know there's more to get from the public there if we can get the, the, the higher dollar times in the morning. So that was the addition to it and I don't know if that helps at all or not, but, um, and I'm sure I didn't say it as eloquently as Brian would have, but, uh, that was, was what we wanted to get out there.
Uh, we, we appreciate what you were trying to accomplish. We just don't think it's viable at this point with our membership. So. Okay, so, I, I agree, we need to get somewhere. But, but your motion is three percent across the board and doesn't address the eighty to eighty-five.
Okay, good. However, that needs to be, and I don't know that I need to make a promote.
Yeah, well.
A motion, I'm just, okay, three percent on the full family and the rest of them on the eighty-five and over. My understanding, you have some form of a program in place to reduce that and get them within par.
Yes.
That is acceptable, you know, if, if that's what we've had in the past, then I'm okay with that.
Well, the, what, what happened in the past was the goal was to get them caught up by this year. And what's being proposed by Joe is to catch it up in three years, which was where we were three years ago. So.
So the proposal is still three years.
From the motion standpoint, do you want to get it caught up now? So, so we're going up three percent everywhere and it would be.
Let's look at the numbers.
Here's the number right now, here's the proposal over three years. The full family's going up three percent, that's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. When we go down to the eighty, eighty-five, we're dropping that two percent over three years. So that would be a two hundred and twenty dollar increase for that one membership. If we try to tackle it all in one year, it'd be a four hundred and ten dollar increase for that one category. And then for the eighty-five, if we went down to the thirty percent, it's two thirty-one now with the three percent and the two percent. These, if we went and knocked it out in one year, it'd be three fifty for them versus the two thirty.
Yeah.
What, why are we, why were we trying, what were, were we trying to accomplish with this parity type thing?
Because the full members were paying, uh, for some reason, the, the lower groups, the eighty and that weren't caught up as far as the parity and with the increases and stuff. So we thought we'd take three years to get them caught up, if I'm talking right. Joe was.
Right, so.
Joe's.
I'll, I'll try to help you, Craig. So if you see where he's got his cursor right now where it says twenty percent?
Yes.
That's twenty percent off the baseline rate, okay, which is, which is the full membership. So three years ago, they were trying to, you could see how it's all nice and clean on the left side with forty-five, seventy-five, ninety, fifty percent, thirty percent, twenty. So on the two categories of the family over eighty and the family eighty-five, they, there was, they had a, a large disparity of trying to get to that nice, clean twenty percent off the baseline rate. So it's currently at twenty-six and a half percent off the baseline rate. The goal is to get that twenty-six and a half down to twenty.
Got you.
So we're trying to figure out the timeline so they don't have to pay four hundred and ten dollars more next year than they did this year. That's the idea.
Now, got you now.
And I'm okay with that, uh, but I just don't want to say this is what we're going to do for the next three years because I think we decide what we're doing this year if you don't want to get caught up. And I, I'm okay with that.
I'm, I understand.
For, for somebody to say we're going to do this three years from now, uh-uh.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and.
Wherever you guys want to go.
And the reality is we may never get there. So.
What, what would you recommend, Mike?
My original proposal was, was cutting it, was it twenty-four and a half, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Something like that, twenty-four, somewhere in there. And the other one was thirty-two and a half, I believe.
Let's put in even, even numbers here, twenty-four and what?
So it was a, a, a twenty-four and thirty-two point five.
There you go. Basically cutting it in half.
And the increase would be?
Two hundred and twenty dollars and two thirty.
Two thirty-one.
Okay. So, are, are you good with that as, as the motion maker? Are you good with the three percent plus this adjustment to the eighty, eighty-five?
Yes.
And the seconder is good with that? Do you want to make any other suggestions or should we vote on this?
You can't vote.
We're going to bring back.
Fair enough, we're giving direction.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will bring back these rates as a resolution at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
It would probably be best if we just stick with consensus as opposed to voting.
I, I think you've got consensus. Are you good with it as a consensus basis, Joe, or did you want? Okay. And, and consensus wise, you're okay with this suggestion? Okay, I think we have consensus.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll still need, uh, some direction from the board as to, uh, I guess I'm assuming we're going to go back to, uh, budget number one. Obviously, now we're going to have to adjust the membership dues line when we bring it back for proposal. Now that three percent is going to be about thirty thousand dollars to the bottom line in an estimate.
Less or more?
Maybe less than that?
Well, you got a million sixty-five now in the budget and that spreadsheet shows a million fifty, so we're already fifteen thousand dollars less.
Well, that was, originally that was, uh, ten eighty-five.
Right.
Right, so that's thirty thousand.
But we only budgeted for ten sixty-five.
Right, so the ten sixty-five is going to have to go down.
To ten fifty.
Ten, I would say, I would.
Forty-five.
Ten, ten forty or ten forty-five maybe?
Yeah. So we got twenty grand coming out of the budget on that.
Twenty or twenty-five. That will affect the bottom line.
So the subsidy will be from two sixty-five, it'll more than likely be about two eighty-five now for the third proposal, as is.
So that's about where we're looking at. If I bring that back, a proposal is a deficit of two eighty-five-ish. And I just want to remind the board that we did add some things to the budget. We're proposing to add more labor to the budget for, for extra rangering. If we, if we want to do that, that's going to increase that deficit even more. I mean, if we put together a really strong rangering program of about four hours a day, whether it be during play or at night, four hours a day for the whole course of the year, you're looking at somewhere around fifteen thousand dollars if we paid somebody nine dollars an hour to do that. If there's somebody willing to do that. But, um, if we add another fifteen thousand dollars in labor in the budget, obviously that's pushing us closer to three. Uh, we also have overseeing of both courses in the budget and, including the driving range. So if there's any board direction, if they accept that number or we want to try to get it to a certain number, is there things we're willing to maybe not do to get to a number that we're good with? But it will definitely need some direction on where to go with that.
Do we want to look at page seventeen? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
That's where I'm at, I'm on page seventeen.
I'm sorry? Yes?
I'm on seventeen, yeah.
Okay.
So we're looking at, you know, we scratched through budget number two. So budget number one, what I, what we proposed the first time, um, you can see those numbers. Is, is there a number, is there an acceptable bottom line number that, that the board would be looking for us to go to so we can maybe look through here to see what we can propose as far as getting to that number?
If I gave you two hundred, say that I want two hundred thousand, that doesn't mean that I don't want. You had ideas on how you could improve besides shutting down the course, going private and semi, you know, whatever you want to call that. There was ideas that were being thrown out at that meeting about how you could bring maybe this in or bring that in. And it's not going to have an impact on the membership on a daily basis. This did. That's the type of thing that I was wanting to see. I don't know how much you can generate. Tell me what you can generate. But for, for me to say that two hundred thousand is acceptable, but yet you could go out and bring it down to a hundred and fifty with a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
Sure.
Come to us and say that, well, we can do it, but you're going to need to have the course shut down for this particular day or whatever that case is. But just to.
Sure.
Zero is acceptable. The rest of it is what we have to work on.
Mm-hmm. So I, I mean, when we set a budget, we're, we're going to obviously do everything we can to generate as much revenue as possible to exceed that budget as far as possible where we can get to.
What can you realistically do without doing that? Without doing, taking the course down to only having one course available to the members?
Sure, so.
What is out there?
Sure, I mean, obviously we can go try to, um, you know, bring in some more tournaments. Sure, I mean, obviously we can go try to, you know, bring in some more tournaments, if you will. I don't, I don't know if it would be feasible for us to go back to the, to the PGA and see if we could bring that event back. I mean, that had a huge impact to our bottom line. It's, I mean, we could make a phone call, it's up to them if they would be willing to entertain it or not. Obviously, you know, we're already trying to increase as much revenue on the, on the restaurant side through programs, through increasing our banquet sales, wedding sales and all that. On the golf side, you know, if, if we go to bring in more tournaments, we, we're going to have to be, you know, willing to accept them on Saturday mornings because that's when ninety percent of them are. Or you can give us, you know, in some particular fashion or form, give us some more tee times to sell or make sure that you're flexible enough. There is availability in season and, or, you know, say in an eight o'clock shotgun. We could try to sell that out, but we, we can't sell an eight o'clock shotgun in February at sixty-two dollars. No, that, that demand's not there. Give us a little more flexibility of, of trying to get to more of a dynamic pricing instead of just a, a blanket pricing, if you will. You know, we're, we're definitely not in a position where we want to push the members around, but we need to make sure we can sell tee times and we need to have good quality tee times to sell. So, you know, we're going to have to make, you know, we're going to have to make some room somewhere to make this happen. It's, it, the bottom line is, it is, it is very possibly can affect the membership in one way or the other of when and where we push them around.
But it'd be on a restricted basis versus every day.
Sure.
And I, and you can, if you come back to me and you tell me, I got to, I can do this on this particular day, where this is the rate we're going to charge, that we think we can charge, and it's going to give you, we're going to get this much revenue out of it.
Sure, and, and in that world of dynamic pricing, it changes dynamically with, with the world. It, it's not, it's a lot more complex than in January, at two o'clock, it's this price. There's other factors. If there's events in town, that could be a factor. If there's no events in town, that could be a factor. It, it, it definitely bases on other people's availability. You know, I, I've.
Has the bluffs ever come to you and asked you for a blanket day that they could come in at eight o'clock?
You're talking about the bluffs right out here on twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So when I first came here five years ago, I brought the bluffs with me. They decided that they wanted to go somewhere else. I can.
Why? Price?
They just were, they, no, I don't think it was necessarily price driven because I think we were very affordable to them. You know, I, when I was at Highlands Ridge is when, is when I had them over there and I had a great relationship with them. And I brought them over here with me. And a lot of those folks still come over here and dine that I know because I see them all the time. But I can approach them to see if they're willing. They just happened, they just really liked to play over there. So they were here one or two years and they went back to Highlands Ridge. I don't know if they're still there. I don't know if they still have a group. That, that group's kind of aging a little bit and I don't know how much they really play anymore. But that's going to be, those are going to be the things that we're going to need to do. Those groups, we need to go find them and we need to build them.
But that was, that's during the week.
That is during the week. Which bear in mind, during the week is when the majority of our play is, the, the member demands during the week and Saturday. If we go out and find groups, then we'll probably say, hey, you know, I'll call you guys up and be like, hey, I, I found the bluffs. They got forty guys, they want to play Monday at one o'clock in a shotgun.
Monday's not available.
Monday's not available. So there's my problem. So am I going to have to find them another, you know, either A, they're not going to come or we're going to have to make room for them. So, I can go find those and bring them to your attention. You could say yay or nay that we want to accept them. But we're going to need a little bit of flexibility, a little room to grow to find these, these revenues on the golf side. So, I'm, I'm willing to put in the work to go find these groups, but we, we got to find them a place to play.
Mike, there's a lot of things, I, I just want you to go over and look on cutting some of the costs that we have. I mean, I, I don't know if you have, you know, I, I see this new budget, I see extra money. I mean, I, I don't know if, like, I can tell you for one thing, it's been my thing, administration sal, administrative salaries, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven, eight-hundred-and-fifty. Have we ever looked at that and said, can we cut that a little? Five percent, ten percent? I mean, it, we have.
Where?
And then I see in the new program here, the membership programs went from thirty, what's, it went up five thousand dollars? But what are we doing there that's different?
And, so in the sales and marketing budget, the eighty-fourteen account for member promotions?
Well, this is membership programs.
What's, what page are you on, Mike?
Uh, twenty-seven. I mean, I, I, and I don't, I don't need to go over this line by line, but I.
The club gives the MGA, you know, a certain amount of money.
WGA and LGA, they, yeah.
Yeah, but we do that, that's not a something.
That's where, that's where it is. That's where it is in the budget.
Yeah, but it, it hasn't went up?
I'm sorry?
From five thousand dollars or? Because we did, we did a couple of years ago, we did the MGA and the LGA and.
We do, we do that every year and that's where it falls in the budget, right there.
You do that?
It comes from, well, it comes out of this budget.
And then did you raise it five thousand dollars? I mean, I just, I just want to make sure that you're.
So, no, you're looking at this year's estimated actual, Mike.
But I, I, what I'd like you to do, Mike, is to make sure that, I mean, hell, we're, we're cutting costs all over the place. I, and I know we all want stuff done, but I.
I'm, I'm not sure why you're saying he's looking at.
So, so he, he said I added five thousand dollars, but thirty-five's been the budget for several years. The twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty estimated actual is at thirty. That's what we're planning on spending this year. Because you got to know, a lot of the member programs and, and things that we usually do in the summer with music or some other events, we're, we're not doing them. So we're saving money by not advertising that we're doing them or putting money into having them.
Okay, but I'm, I'm looking at consistently, you've been twenty-seven, twenty-six, thirty is the estimate for this year, but next year you're proposing thirty-five. Why the extra five thousand?
So, that, that's the number that it, it has been in the budget for a while?
I, I'm not asking what was in the budget before. I'm saying that your actual expense has been under thirty thousand dollars every year for the last three years. So who cares if you have thirty-five thousand in the budget? Why are you putting thirty-five thousand in the budget this year if you're spending thirty thousand or less?
Sure, and, and my, my point on that is, we were planning on spending all thirty-five thousand of it this year. That is something that we can cut. I mean, it's going to be less programming, if that's a line item that we want to reduce, I'll.
That's what I want you to do.
We'll reduce it and we will spend, we can spend less in that category. There will be a, an effect to it.
What, what I'm, where my frustration is, and I've been fairly quiet because people have been speaking to the point, but I've been hearing you tell me excuses and problems and what we're looking for are solutions. Now, you gave us a solution that you thought would work, it doesn't work. So we're still looking for solutions. I agree with Craig. Zero is acceptable. We may not get there this year, but we need to look at, okay, if, if we're not going to change the membership program and we're only going to go up three percent on the memberships, how can we still generate more outside play? How can we generate money other places? What can we do to create? And, and yeah, I think go back to the PGA and see if we can get one of these big events. I, you know, I think you've got a board now that might be amenable to it because we really do want to try to offset these constant deficits so that we can operate. But clearly, we need to be very concerned about how we impact the members. And we, you know, I, I still think we're, we're underpriced based on the competition, but a three percent increase is, is making some of that up. Now we have to look at, okay, where else can we make more revenue? Where else can we cut on expenses? I don't think the board would want us to cut back on the overseeing because that was such an acceptable program, but it's an expensive program. Do we, do we want to have them look at cutting back on the overseeing of both courses? That's, that's a lot of money, but it does make a big difference in the playability of the golf courts. That kind of direction we can give him. My guess, you guys tell me, but my guess is the overseeing is a good thing to do.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, so, so that's not some place that we're saying, cut, we'll figure out that one. But, but let's figure out where we can cut, where we can come up with more revenue. And bottom line is, we're probably going to have a deficit this year since we can't come up with that silver bullet for this year. And you were telling us that the silver bullet that was going to kill a lot of members wasn't going to get us to zero this year anyway. And, and as we discussed, in my mind, we're still not at zero because we've got four hundred thousand dollars in vehicles that we have to have to run the golf course that we're calling capital instead of operating. So we're still not at zero. So I still think there's work to do. We need to figure out what can we do to, to make this thing not cost the district quite so much so that we don't have to go out to the entire world of Sun and Lake and say, okay, you got to pay us more in assessments because we've got to subsidize this golf course more. Because we've got five hundred members, but we've got nine thousand residents. So, you know, it's, it, there is an impact there and the golf adds value to all the residents, but it provides a lot more value to the members than it does the residents. So, you know, I, I don't know how much more direction you want us to give you. We need to find ways to increase. Get creative.
No, I.
That's, that's your job.
Just on page twenty, it's, we're just, it's page twenty-seven. If you look at what you've been doing, advertising, there's five thousand available right there. There's five thousand available in special programs and events and there's five thousand in membership programs. That's fifteen thousand dollars right there, that just paid for the overseeing about. Yeah, I. You didn't use it in the past, why should you have to do, have to use it now? We talk about advertising and, but we want to do it through social media and stuff. That doesn't, this is all print and we, I don't know what.
That's, that's where it comes out of, it comes out of the print advertising, just at some point in the past, that's how they kind of lumped it, they just lumped it together for the, for the budgeting purposes here. It, that's just where it's always been. I don't know if that made it more simple or more complex, but that's where that falls.
But it, it's the idea behind it, there's fifteen thousand dollars very quickly that I could get on that page alone.
Right.
Our, our thought process there was that, you know, trying to go find new business, we were going to need to spend new monies to go find that new business.
We're going to need to spend money to advertise to go find.
So that, that was the, the thought process there.
But with all respect, we've been doing that and, and we're trying, I mean, we're fighting, trying to, to save money and to do stuff and we just want everybody to try to do, I mean, these are not good times. So if we have to cut salaries, we have to do this, we, who knows with the, with the companies coming in?
Sure.
What they're going to do with salaries and what they're going to say we need, I mean, I'm trying to help, not make it worse. But I just want to trust you guys, when you look at this budget, is there anything there we can take out for one year or two years or?
That's all understandable. We, we will huddle back up as a team for the next go-around here and we'll true up those numbers and, and look at every different creative way we can, we can find those dollars. And we'll also let you know if there is going to be any effect on the operation at all because of it.
Because we might, like Mike said, we don't know if Canadian people are coming. I can't even tell you if three percent won't drive some people out. The increase we just talked about.
Yeah.
So we're all guessing, but.
Right.
We all got to work and I keep hearing sacrifice, well, there's got to be sacrifices with, with Sun and Lake and Billy Casper too. I mean, it can't be the way the world is right now and everything go on the same. I mean, I'm proud that we could pay everybody that worked here that didn't get laid off. But the ones we laid off weren't, weren't essential. I mean, I, I'm kind of proud of that, but it cost us a lot of money to keep people here when everybody else was getting laid off. I mean, there has to be a way that we can help.
Sure.
So if we want to look at the expense side, I'll go through some of those expenses in sales and marketing and, and G and A. Earl's standing here, I, I don't know if he has some proposals on, on, on the golf maintenance side that, that maybe we could move it out.
I don't really have a proposal. I wanted to make a point because I, again, I keep hearing over and over that, that we need to look at it and I can say personally, everybody with Billy Casper has taken a pay cut this year, including myself.
I did.
I cut my staff over fifty percent in March. If I look at Sun and Lake as a whole, I can't say that. So my frustration is, I understand we're all trying to find money and we're going to go back to the well and if it comes out of my budget, it comes out of my budget, we'll figure it out. That's what we're here to do. But there's always seems to be this adversarial, Casper, you got to do this and you're not looking at it. I know personally, from March to now, we have cut fifty percent, over fifty percent of my labor. I, I can't say any other department in Sun and Lake has done that. So if, if this crisis, this COVID, this, we're looking at it as a, as a whole, as partners, we should all be looking at it. And, and I, I don't see that.
We're going to go back to the general fund.
I see it directly at Casper that we have to do more and more and more and that's fine.
Right.
If that's what we have to do, we have to do it, we're going to do it. But I get frustrated that the perception, if you just listen to the audio, is that we're not doing it and everybody else is when my perception on a daily basis is that we are and maybe not everybody else is.
So as a, as an entity, we will be going back into the general fund as well. Don't, don't think that we're just going to be looking at golf, okay? So as an entity, we have a responsibility to do so. So the direction from the board, I know last year we budgeted two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, two-fifty for subsidy. The direction from the board is to lower that, below that number, right? I mean, we want to, we want to move towards a lower subsidy to, from the general fund and look at our revenues, look at our expenses, but we will be doing that as an organization, okay? Not just from the golf side.
Understood.
But if, all my point was is, in February, if the figures I got are right, we paid a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars in salaries to Billy Casper. In March, right in the middle of the pandemic, we did, we paid a hundred-and-sixty thousand. So we went down five thousand, that's good, but hell, we weren't, we hardly were open. And I, I hear we cut, well, and I, a couple of the Mike's figures, they saved us eighteen thousand dollars over a, a time. Well, when, when you have the budget we got, eighteen thousand dollars, and that's all I'm saying, I'm not blaming Billy Casper. I'm just, we have a lot of expenses that when all this stuff hits, we still pay it. And I guess being the government that we are, we have to, have to do it or, or something, but it's, and I, I haven't got April yet from Omar, but I'm, I'm sure April was, we were closed almost a whole month. And I bet that didn't go down to a hundred-and-twenty thousand. It's, it was probably around a hundred and sixty or might even went up. And that's a month.
I'm sorry, Mike, can, can you repeat what you just said? I'm sorry. You said we were closed for a whole month? What did you, I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to follow.
Oh, while we were shutting down in April.
Oh, in April, I'm sorry.
And, and I, I know, I know you did the best job you could, but we weren't cutting people that were, I mean, I think if I owned this Sun and Lake, there would have been a lot more than a savings of eighteen thousand dollars because I would have had to lay off some, some, some substantial salaries.
Let me, I'll get you some, one moment, let me pull up our financials here. We, we saved, there was a lot more savings than eighteen thousand.
This isn't a fight, but it's, it's just a, and I'm, I'm proud of that, but I don't, I want to see some ways that we can stop this because we're government. I mean, I don't think one of our management teams got laid off during all this time. I know our management people pitched in and, and helped cook and helped do everything, but they still got, I mean, that's all I'm, and I'm not blaming Billy Casper. I'm blaming the, the situation.
And that's the case on the district side too, there was no management cuts, that is correct.
And that's all, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, but we're just caught in this, in this thing. I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, but we're just caught in this, in this thing.
Well, we didn't cut any services.
So for.
Right. I mean, I take offense for what what that was said right there, okay? He's saying that we didn't cut. Well, we did not cut services. We actually added services because we did more because we we could go in and do work in places, okay? We didn't cut services.
We had to lay off our our recreational staff. We did do that, but but what you're, to your point, we did not cut administrative salaries on the district side or on the Billy Casper side that I'm aware of from our team locally.
I want to offer some some actual numbers. So in labor savings, this is compared to budget, in March, which we had the slowdown, which was late March, we saved $30,000 in labor. In April, we saved $90,000 in labor. In May, we saved $47,000 in labor. In June, we're rejected to save $30,000 in labor, and we're projected to save another 40 or 50,000 in labor for the rest of the year.
Okay, well.
We're saving, that's a total of $302,000 under budget in labor. We've, and that doesn't even count expenses. Our expenses were projected to be $273,000 under in expenses. That's a saving of a half a million dollars.
I just like its figures because the figures I got January, we paid Billy Casper $170,000.
You're talking, you're talking management fees.
In February, we paid him 165,000. In March, we paid him 160. I mean, I.
Those are ma, those are not operational fees, those are management fees.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. And this is not a fight. This is, this is reality, Mike. I'm, you know, I don't want to fight with you.
No, I'm, I just want to make sure you have every information you can have to make the best possible decisions you can make.
I'm sorry, I think I'm making an incorrect statement. So the, on the district side, we did not cut administrative salaries. Maybe there was some cuts on the Billy Casper side. I apologize.
In our admin department, we had cuts in our admin department.
Okay, I apologize. I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm just, I'm trying to make a statement, not start a fight, but I could just, the figures I get from Omar are different from, because he just said he saved us all this money, and hell, it went down $5,000 in salaries. I mean, I don't, I don't even know who to blame, if there is somebody to blame. I just know that we keep losing money. And we sat up here, and everybody tells us how good they're doing, and, you know, I don't know. I hope the best for all.
So last year, we budgeted 222,250 for subsidy is there. So our goal, when we bring back the next budget, is to be below that number? Is that a agreeable? I mean, is that what you're, is that the goal of the board is to be below what we budgeted for the current year, which was 222?
My goal was just to to cut everything we possibly can and do the best job we can for our members and our residents, and that's all I'm trying to do.
We would love to see the cut.
Okay.
We don't know what the number should be.
That could be a target, but I, who knows if that's a good target.
It's, it will be a tough target, but, you know, if we start making cuts, product will be different. We will deliver a different golf course. We will deliver a different product all around.
Careful, because that's not what we're saying.
That's, that's why I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that that is the direction of the board.
I think it was pretty clear. We're saying we don't want to cut things like overseeding. We do want to cut things like advertising and promotion and.
And so you can't, you just, you just can't say stuff like that because we don't know what we have to do to do it, but we decided, you get the ideas to stop it.
Sure. Would you, would you like to remove the subsidy from the MGA, WGA, and LGA? That's $15,000.
You're, you bring it to us, what you think.
Well, I'm, I'm asking now. I'd, I'd rather ask now and then and then come back to you with a budget that you are willing to accept instead of proposing something you're not willing to accept.
What does that subsidy do?
That's what they, they subsidize the MGA events, the WGA events. They they use it for entertainment, payouts, food, whatever they want to use.
I was on, I was the treasurer of the MGA, and then I got elected here five years ago until I got off, but I went to Jim Kurtzborn and said, the MGA doesn't want to run all these, the MGA is a men's golf association. We're running 15 or 10 couples tournaments. I said, the board asked me to go talk to Jim about letting Billy Casper take over those tournaments. That's exactly what I did. And Jim come back and said, no, 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 we don't, we don't want to do that. Billy Casper does not want to do that, so we're paying you to do this. So that's where they increased, and I know this is a fact. This is not something I'm making up. They they give us more money. Well, what, I I had to get off the board because I got elected here, but what the MGA board did with that money was hire bands and, you know, to make the parties afterwards more. And that's what that money goes to the MGA for them to run the tournaments. That's what, we're paying them to stop Billy Casper from doing it because Jim Kurtzborn didn't want to do it. Mike, now, if Mike comes to us and say, Sun and Lake could do that? But that's not, Mike, I don't want to micromanage you. I mean, if you come to me and say, we can save that money, but we got to run them, I'll go along with you, but I'm telling you what exactly what happened to that.
He's absolutely right.
And that's why it went that way. Mike was on the board with.
Yeah, he's absolutely right. What happened was.
These tournaments cost us more money, cost, those that are participating, a cost fee. That fee, from what I understand, covers meals and prize money. It doesn't include the band?
No, well, they, they've been using that, that money that we give.
Right.
To to hire the bands and.
Right, they use it for some entertainment and stuff like that.
My V I D and stuff, I mean.
Right. What it was, was we were bringing so many people into the restaurant, but they weren't MGA members. We had MGA members were complaining, we're always using MGA money, so they wanted, so to help Jim Kurtzborn, which was a smart business move, you know, because we're filling the restaurant, he would pay for the bands and he would pay for decorations, I don't know what else, you know, I mean, but but really, that's what it was used for, Michael, right?
That's what they say. Well, that's, that's what.
Well, I mean, I mean, they didn't use it for food. They used it for basically entertain.
For stuff.
You know, for, I know they used some for the, for the member guest for food, but it was to make it better. That's all it was.
They also had the MGA pick up three couples events.
You were on the board, too.
Yeah, there were three couples events that the club used to run, and the MGA took those over when they got that additional funding.
Right, yeah.
And that was the big, that was the bulk of that money.
Right, you know, I mean.
So Mike, it's, it's up to you. I mean, if you think you can save money and you want to do that, I, the way it was when I was on the MGA board, they were happy to get the money and to do it themselves.
Right, yeah, they wanted us to.
If you could do it cheaper, but I, I don't want to get in there micromanaging what you're doing. I just know how that came about, and Jim Kurtzborn paid the MGA more money so they would, that Billy Casper wouldn't have to deal with. And that's.
Right.
So you tell me, you come up, but I want you to do that with every item. I want you to pick 5,000 someplace or 10, like Gregory and you said. I mean, I want you to to look at this with a microscope and help us. That's all. I'm asking for help, but I don't want to tell you to cut this or tell you to cut that.
Sure, I just.
And nobody said, you say it's going to be a different golf course. Why?
Well, we have, we've asked for, you know, we're continually asked to do a lot of things, and I know we had, you know, things that were, like, say, the weed issue, like, we had a little bit of a weed issue out there. Well, it costs money to to navigate through that stuff. If we want to cut that out, then we're going to, you know, we're going to have a weed issue. If we, if we want to cut fertilizer, you know, we're going to have, you know, it's going to get thin in the wintertime. There's, there's, there's going to be a consequence to things that we removed. Now, I know there's, there's.
So let's, let's be clear on our direction then. We want a quality product. We don't expect Pebble Beach, but we do want a quality golf course. We don't want to cut things that are going to make it less playable. We do want to make some enhancements like the overseeding that has worked on Turtle. We want to do it on Deer. And we want to look at areas where we can cut without having a major impact to members and without having a major impact to the golf course. Now, that may limit what you can cut this year, which is where we have to look at, where we can get creative on revenue. But we, we aren't looking for a lesser product. We're looking for a good product, and we're looking for a good member experience, especially since we're increasing the rate 3%. So we don't, we don't want to inconvenience the members. So does that give you the direction you need?
I, I understand the direction. It's going to be difficult, but I will do the best I can.
Well, we understand you're not going to get to zero. We're, we're asking you to get as good as you can get, and when you get there, we may say, okay, where else can we shave a little bit? This is not an unusual exercise. I had to go through it every year at Pebble Beach because the bottom line is the bottom line, and we can't keep having these deficits come out of our, it's going to impact the projects we can do if we keep having to spend our capital on operations. So that's, that's where we've got to just sharpen your pencil. I know, you've got to, you've got to run the operation. We're trying to make sure that we've looked at every place we can save a, save a dollar or make a dollar.
Well said, Dale.
Bill Norcross, resident. I enjoyed the, you know, the banter back and forth and trying to resolve the past problems that we have here. And I can see at 2%, 4,600 bucks is 92 bucks. 3% is 138 dollars. Now, we do have water bills that have gone up. I heard somebody said it, it really went up. I haven't checked because that's not my department. I just have a problem. It's, it's easier to spend somebody else's money. You get up there and, you know, it's kind of like, you know, it's easy to get this and get that, you know, and this is what we want. Well, I'm paying for it, and everybody else is paying for it as a member. You have to understand. Now, the, what I can't understand is you, you people knew what was going up, going on up north. People have been locked in for months. They're all out there playing golf. They're paying 65, 85 dollars a round of golf. If they knew what we were paying down here, they'd be down here in it if they could. So, you know, this, there's the advertising right there. If you can get to, this is, look at, if you can get down here, we got a round of golf for 26 bucks with a cot, you know, no hot dog, but you've got a cot. And it's ridiculous. It really is. And I just think that, as I mentioned, the white elephant that we have here, which is causing a big problem, big problem. And I think that zero in on this, and hopefully we'll come up with some kind of good resolve. On the condition of the golf course, I think Earl has done a marvelous job. He really was. I heard a peep out of Nima Toads, our problems with the greens. He's done an excellent job. The fringes are in pretty good shape. Debatable about the fairways and the tees could be really improved, especially on the side. Now, these guys really need direction. They need, I know Ray Brooks has gone out with, with Earl, I don't know who else has gone out there with Earl, and show them this is what should be done to make it extend, extend it, extend it, make it look good without spending a ton of money. I was a member, and I, and I, and I look at the situation, I said, you know, there's coming off a tee, there's potholes, and it could be a grassy area and fixed up very, very quickly and very inexpensively. Mike has mentioned about the Canadian players. I don't know. I don't know if these people are going to come back, and when they do come back, say, look, we want a refund. Now, what are you going to do? Say, tough luck? I think so, but that's the way it is. And I think we're going to lose a few of those if we do go 138 bucks up. And I think a 2% proposal on that, I think, would be more reasonable. That's 92 bucks. I understand. If you have a good product here, people will come. I heard about Pebble Beach. I want to go play Pebble Beach. I don't care if it's 600 dollars, I want to play it. They go out and play it, and they find, I got a report, it wasn't in good shape. It's hard to believe, but maybe because weather conditions and it gets beat up with people going out there paying 2,000 bucks for a foursome. So, I don't know. I don't know how it's going to boil down here, but you certainly like this place to succeed because I've got a, like I mentioned, I've got a major investment here, along with everybody else. And right now, I'm the only one here that's not getting paid, all right? So I kind of understand that we want to keep the membership up. We want to attract public as much as we possibly can. So good luck to us, and I hope you really take it serious.
Okay. Are we, are we through with golf, or do we need to go through more detail? In my view, it.
I got one quick question.
Okay.
On a celebration of life for a resident, how much do we charge for the banquet room?
That would all depend. Is, are we talking about a member or a non-member?
Member.
A member?
Well, a resident. One that would, would have paid assessments here.
Right, so if, I can go through the list. So it depends on how big of an event they're going to have. We, I mean, it's right on the rate sheet.
I know, I see that.
So we would follow the rate sheet. So if it's a member, we don't charge a member. If it's a resident, correct. If it's a resident, if they have a smaller event, I think it's like 40 bucks. If they want to have the whole building, obviously, it's going to cost more, but, you know, we follow that rate sheet, but, yes.
So it's $1,000?
If they want to have a massive, the whole building, yeah. Now, obviously, we can, those numbers are, are negotiable. Those are kind of maximum rates, but we, I haven't, I have not charged a resident $1,000 for a celebration of life.
We got food? Okay. Shall we take a, we'll take a lunch break and come back and.
10 minutes.
I'm going to do whatever Mike wants.
We drove together. But thank you for, for all of your help today.
So we did include, as mentioned, the 140 for three years and then a gap for two years with the new golf cart proposal for the five-year lithium batteries. So we put that in there, but then at the bottom, we kept the other alternative on the lead acid three years. So once the RFP comes back, we'll be able to tell which is the best scenario and see if there's some cost savings through that competition process. And then we'll make a final decision on that. And then we removed the two items at the bottom. We did remove the Turtle Grunt, Turtle Greens Loop irrigation project for 350 and the full entire irrigation project at 1.35. And then we also eliminated the whole 17 upgrade for $50,000 and the Aqua Tee project for now until we get through the master plan. So I just wanted to show how we're kind of accounting for those and keeping track of things that we change throughout the process, so. I also got some loan options in there, just to kind of see, obviously, for this budget, we started off with a $385,000 excess. You know, that'll change depending on the subsidy amount, so, you know, let's just assume 200,000, and that'll leave 185,000 for projects. So just at a 1.7 million dollar loan, that kind of covers that. Kind of gives us a threshold of where we could be to be completely balanced and do some projects. Just a good earmark to look at. So we'll go ahead and jump over to the general fund on page 33. We'll just go page by page and kind of discuss it. I want to give a breakdown on kind of how we allocate our resources in the general fund between labor, legal, insurance, drainage, and then operating. I think, you know, being able to look at percentages and how much we allocate to certain things is kind of useful. I think, you know, being able to look at percentages and how much we allocate to certain things is kind of useful when we compare funds. So, for the estimated actuals, obviously, we're, this year, we're budgeting a deficit of 892, 094. That deficit is being offset by a $650,000 transfer from the utility, which gets us, gets us to the 294,000 expected loss. Proposal number one, we were budgeting to a deficit of 609,000. That included the golf subsidy at 602 and then district capital at 282. We removed the shuffleboard project phase two, which was the Paton Bocce Ball project for 125. We've, we've removed that for now until we get the master plan done. And then obviously, the subsidy came down for expenses. We really didn't have any changes. But I thought it was good just to be able to see 40% of our funds go to labor and benefits, 8% go to legal, 6% to insurance and utilities, 15 goes to drainage and roads, and then the rest is operating at 21%. So we are operating at, right now, the budget is 105% of revenue, so we're at a deficit of 185. Next page.
I don't know when it's a good time, but because of it impacted general fund. You know, we, we got in here where we got, you know, talk about loans. And if, if we don't address our revenue issue, the idea of a loan to me is, just doesn't make any sense. I know Cliff Wood doesn't, I don't necessarily agree with him all the time. But I, I'm getting to feel fairly strong that we need to have a person, a proven track record person to market Sun and Lake. I, my opinion, if we don't grow Sun and Lake revenue through more people, it's not going to happen. I don't see it at the golf course level at all. I mean, based on where we're at, if we don't add members here, I don't know how we're ever going to be able to do what we want to do. And I, in my opinion, I think we need to try to, to find somebody that can help us market this and make it... I mean, it, it could very well be that this, you know, this person can make a hell of a lot, can make a lot of money if they bring in leads, if they bring in solid people. I mean, we've got plenty of land that's available through the county. We've got land ourselves, Sun and Lake. And we've got all kinds of contractors out here that will build houses for them. And we could help set that all up if we had somebody to do that and knew how to market what we have here. I'm just, if we don't do something like that, I don't know how, I couldn't entertain a loan based on what we currently have.
I, I don't disagree with you at all on the loan. My disagreement would be on the concept of hiring somebody for marketing. The, the challenge there, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Wood.
I know. I'm not...
I mean, the bottom, the bottom line is ideally, we would have a master developer who would buy up or acquire lots and sell them and put together the plan or a modernization of the plan that the original developer of Sun and Lake had. The developer could then justify the marketing person. It, it's hard for us to figure out how to pay for a marketing person when we really are a government entity. We're not a developer. And, you know, I, I think we, we need to maybe put some efforts. If I was, if I was going to hire a marketing person, it would be a marketing person to go out and find a developer, not to try to figure out how to get them to coordinate the sale of lots, the building of homes and the selling of golf memberships. Because there's just too many moving parts for us to try to do that as a government entity, in my mind.
And I can accept part of that. My biggest problem is if, if we wait for a master developer to come in, in my opinion, it won't get done. And if we don't go out and toot our own horn, and whether this person has to do all of those particular avenues, I don't... But somehow, I just don't see a master developer coming in, so therefore, how do we ever get it marketed if we don't do it ourselves? I, I, I don't think, you know, Hornick's building quite a few different places. We've got this Steve Service that's building several homes. Baker's building a home. Tommy James builds homes. But, you know, we've got the contractors here in the area that have got a track record for making homes in our area. And we've got real estate agents that could assist, I'm sure. But if we don't do it, I don't see it getting done. And if we don't grow, I don't know how we can expect to do many of the things that we have in here. In my opinion, the golf course, it's our number one asset. It's a good draw. But the golf revenue is never going to be enough to do the things that we have to do. So if we don't take the step, if you will, to really go after additional people down here, I, I just think we're fighting a losing battle. We're, we're always going to be inching into that reserve. And before long, that reserve's not going to be there. And that's not acceptable.
I, you're, I, we agree on, on most of the points. The, the issue is if, if there is a way to make this profitable from a development standpoint, there's going to be a master developer who can do it better than the government entity can. And if a master developer can't be attracted to come in and make it happen, our trying to do it as a government agency is throwing good money after bad.
Oh, okay. If I accept that, how do we grow?
We need to find a master developer.
And who's going to do that?
Well, that's what I said. If I was going to hire a marketing person, it would be finding a marketing person to go out and find us a master developer. And I don't know how to do that. I've made a couple of phone calls. Most master developers don't want to go into an area with less than 100,000 people. And that's our entire county. That's not Sebring or Sun and Lake. And, and that's where the challenge is going to be. And, and that gets me back to the, the other question is, how can, you know, I think it's great that we've got some developers in here now building homes because that's going to help. Whether we can attract more small developers, part of that is going to be finding, you know, where, where, where are they attracting people from? And can we attract them to get more involved to making more homes? Maybe we can eventually find a master developer. I think the, the advantage that we have is that we are one of the most affordable areas of Florida. And Florida is a very desirable area for everybody trying to get out of the high-tax states. But it's, it's not an easy fix. And I, and I think that, you know, we're really not equipped to do, to, to hire somebody who can try to sell an unorganized package. What we need to do is find somebody who can organize the packages. Now, Hornick is doing something. Southern Homes is doing something. Whether we can find somebody who can do something bigger, I mean, we still got to do, deal with Unit 12. That's a whole nother bailiwick that we've got to get sorted out. And the sooner we can do that, the better. That's why I've suggested, you know, we need to find a commercial real estate person who can, can find somebody to buy that. And if we can find somebody to buy that and attract them in for that, they may be the guy who can come in as the master developer. So I think for, for us to try to create a marketing program when we don't really have a solid thing to market is...
I think we do have. I think we've got available lots.
But we don't own the lot. So how can we market lots we don't own?
Tell them to go down to the county and buy them. That's a very, very reasonable price that you can pay for a lot. It's not hard. It's not difficult to do, especially if you have someone that knows the process and can help, help them walk through doing, doing just that. I just, by the time, if, okay, I'm fine with getting a master developer or someone who can get us there. But if we don't start trying to market this area to whomever, I, I think there's a lot of people out there right now that are looking for this type of an area, especially after the pandemic. And I just don't know how to get, capture that. And $75,000 worth of advertising isn't going to do it.
Agreed.
I'm 100% with you guys. I just don't have the answer, but I would be a favor of any good idea.
I don't have the answer, but I know we've got to grow, we've got to increase our revenue. And I don't see us having a plan to do that.
Well, we, we have to for everything. It's just like anything we do. Anything we can do in the future has got to be on a tax base or assessments. And that's the way it is in any county around. It's, you know, I, I'm bored tangent with, with my wife working it for the county for 10 years. And she got one raise in, in 10 years because they had 800 employees. No, there was no revenue from the state coming in. And 1% raise is a million dollars with 800 employees. So how do you give a raise? You don't. I mean, and we're going to be in the same way because I, the only place we make money in is utilities.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean, how can we keep giving employee raises off the utility fund? We've got to get more people in here, raise the tax base so we can keep good employees and pay. I mean, we, but I'm frustrated because I don't have the answer, but it...
Well, the good news is we have 32 permits open right now. So that's, that's probably the highest we've ever seen. Is that right? At one time?
Correct.
Yeah. So...
And that's the start.
Good to start, yeah. The problem is we run into a lot too.
What caused that to happen?
So I think with Southern Homes, we got a little bit lucky in just timing and being able to get those group of lots with the county. I think to us, it's a detriment that we don't own them because we have no skin in the game. It'd be easy for us to go and market these lots, but the county isn't kicking us back anything for advertising or helping or pushing people to them. So that makes it difficult. And I think for Southern Homes too, for a developer, you're not only carrying the cost of assessments per lot that you buy, which is a detriment, but you also have $4,000 in permit fees here, plus a septic system that charges them three grand, where they don't have that at the country club. They don't have that at City of Sebring. So we have a couple of things that kind of, kind of scare off developers in, in large scales because those extra costs are there in building. So before you even start, you've got seven grand right off the bat here in Sun and Lake that you have to tackle. So we, we've got a couple of challenges, but the, the biggest one is we just don't have any inventory or lots or, or anything to market.
I hear that, but I don't, I don't accept it. The county is more than willing to probably sit down with us and discuss how we can go ahead and market these lots. They'd be happy to get rid of them.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not getting anything.
Oh, yeah. They're going to get all, they're, they're getting 100% of the proceeds, yeah.
They'll sit down with us. There's something that could happen.
But at the county making a million five, you'd think they would invest 10% of that into advertising these lots. And they still don't even take that avenue. So for us to get 0% and invest doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Are they still taking back lots?
We're going to get $7,000 for the hookup. We're going to get assessments that we cannot increase our assessments enough to ever cover the revenue that we need.
Yeah.
You start doing that and you're going to have a mass exodus.
Yeah.
No doubt about it. So if we don't take upon it, and I'm not a marketer, never have been, never will be, but I do know that somehow we have got to increase our revenue. And the only place I see that is by drawing more people down here.
That's how we're going to, we're going to, we can't keep surviving if we don't sell lots.
Right. And, and if it's, if it's the county that got the lot sold, fine and dandy.
Yeah.
But now we've got an assessment that comes to do on there. We're evident, we'll probably have a person that may or may not golf. But at least we've got assessments coming in from that particular lot versus it sitting out there growing weeds. To me, we, we, we're going to sit and argue about these kind of budgets every year with no revenue stream available to us, except for the 32 new homes.
Just to, just to cover one employee, let's say it's a $50,000 employee. You got $700 assessments. It would take 71 homes to offset that, that salary. That's homes. That's not vacant lots. And that, that's the balance is you throw an employee at 50 grand. It takes 70 lot sales and homes built. When the average homes we build a year is 25, we're at 32 this year, which is great. But we never get close to, to 70 a year to get that increase to make it make sense.
I got a question.
But if we were getting back seven grand per sale on the lot, it'd be a different, it would be a different story.
But I have a guy that's got a lot of money, a friend's got a lot of money. And him and I actually came down here to look through here. And the first thing he asked me, and I asked Omar before, what's it cost before to even start building? He just said seven grand. Would the board, would, would the board give them? Say, say, say a developer comes in and says, I'm going to build 50 houses. All right. Could the board vote to give, cut those costs in half down to, down to three, say, three grand? If you've got someone, you know, I mean, that's, that's how you're going to get people in. That's how these businesses come in. We just kicked them up, didn't we? What? I said, we just increased them, didn't we?
Well, we increased them for like commercial properties and two inches, but the residential's always been 40, 40 grand.
Contractor or anybody comes in for a building, the first thing they're looking for is a tax break. You know? And I know that because in Mass, we did it all the time. And I know this is not, that's, I just think... I mean, you've got to, you know, you've got to have something to bring them in. Or you've got to give them a, you've got to give them a carrot. You've got to give them that carrot. Okay, it's seven grand to build a house. We're going to, you know, if you build 10, 20 or whatever, you know, this is what your cost is going to be. I mean, seven grand's a lot before you even start.
We'd have to, we'd have to make it a bigger one, but could we even do that? If, do we have the power to say, if somebody wants to build 50 homes, could we give them?
You do have the power to approve an agreement with some sort of a developer or master developer based on whatever criteria that is.
And when we met with a Realtor, I know Century 21 had some pretty interesting ideas from like dealing with Highlands Ridge. They kind of helped put that package together. But they would offer, in conjunction with Highlands Ridge, the, they would offer a free golf cart if you bought a home or built a home in there. So the district would put in two grand and the developer would put in two grand. But you're not putting out funds until they're bringing in four grand worth of assessments and construction permit fees. So those type of lucrative programs could be another avenue without having upfront cost or labor cost and benefits and all those other things to try and attract more developers to build here in Sun and Lake versus City of Sebring or Lake Placid.
I wouldn't mind doing it if, but not just a few little ones.
Right. And a couple of years ago, that's what we did with golf, right?
Yeah, the free golf, yeah.
The free golf, if you, as, as a new homeowner here in the district. That was the board's idea of trying to
Promote, yeah.
Gain, gain and promote some interest here in Sun and Lake.
The only problem with free golf is it's only golfers. You want just golfers.
That's what we want, yeah.
Well, you don't want just golfers. You want other people, you know, I mean, if you're selling 50 homes, how many golfers are you going to get out of that 50 homes? You know, you don't golf that much, right?
Right.
There you go.
I, I didn't buy here because I wanted to golf here. I bought here. I like the golf environment.
Yeah, exactly.
I haven't got time to play golf that much.
I mean, I was talking to somebody yesterday and, and, and they, all they talked about is everything else but golf. And that's what you want. You want to build the whole community, not just the golf community. And that's what we got to target. That's what I think.
Yeah.
And Billy with all the guy with all the money, and he's a... And Billy, with all the guy with all the money, and he's a lot smarter than, than I am, and this is what he said, if you want to build that place, this is what you've got to do. Okay?
Maybe we bring the contractors in and ask them how the hell do we do it?
Throw them a carrot.
Let's get back to the budget, I guess, but I just know that if we don't increase our revenue.
Well, him and I talked about building down here.
About this for, yeah.
Okay, we're going to talk about it and talk about it.
I know, I know.
Don't do a damn thing.
But I can't.
That's not what I meant.
Well, but it's.
I meant that.
But have we?
We've talked about stay and play programs, you know, do we, do we as a district want to invest in something like that? Do we want to have a developer? Well, the, the board's direction many years ago was we'd rather have that developer here, you know, so that as we market our community, we could bring people here and show them our, you know, stay here, not only stay here, but show them our golf courses and show them our restaurant and show them the community that we have. But many years ago, the board, you know, didn't want to pull that plug on any construction or any, any units, or we even talked, we did some rental units on Edgewater, but the idea of actually buying or constructing something to bring people here, you know, has been talked about for a long time. That's, it's a challenge.
Yeah. Originally, the quality in there was a holiday and the developer built. It was owned by the developer originally so that he could bring people here. And after that changed, then Ridge Realty actually had a resort program with Sunland Lake.
Yes, they did.
The manager of Ridge was the wife of the general manager of the, of Sunland Lake, and they did this residential rental program to bring people in. And I know you came in when Resorts.
Yeah, Castrada.
Yeah, they, so they brought you in. I don't know where they put you up, but.
National Recreation.
Yeah.
National Recreation Properties, I think that's who it was.
You've got to give them a carrot to get them here. You've got to be willing to say, okay, we're only charging you three grand for each house you build.
Well.
Because we're going to get it back forever. Right? I know you don't like to give anything.
Well, to get back to what Craig said, I, if, we need to find some developers then, things to me like.
Yeah.
I, the reason I brought it up now is because I think there's got to be something significant in the general fund for this year if we ever intend to do anything about it. I don't know what the answer is. I just, it's the reason I brought it up. What, whether it's bring in all the contractors and see what their ideas are, or bring the county in, especially if we get, if we get new people on the console, maybe, you know, this is the golf Mecca of the world, you know, we've got twenty, ten golf courses, we've got this, we've got that. We, the county's got Buku lots.
Yeah.
That we can provide to you. But if we don't, we don't, and I know it's going to impact the budget, but if we don't have any money in there, that's why I brought it up.
We need to do something, but I.
The other challenge is the lots are not adjacent to each other, and, right? I mean, that's been a, we've had questions recently too, right?
Yeah.
On that.
Yeah, a lot of them, a lot of contractors want to save time and cost.
They want, they want it set together.
Build them right next to each other, but, so we are getting a lot of calls and inquiries from small developers. I don't know that we'll ever get the large one, but we'll keep trying.
Well, may, maybe the compromise, instead of a quote, "marketing person," would be a development director. I know that the cities I've worked with have had development directors that their, their job is trying to attract the businesses that are needed to grow the community. And in our case, the businesses that are needed are developers. So get a development director that is essentially marketing to these developers to attract them to buy the county lots and build the homes and attract the homeowners. And maybe, if we tried that, see if a development director could make a difference, you know, if we, I don't know what it's going to cost to hire one, but they're not cheap. But, and you need somebody who can make it happen.
Right, and that's, whatever we want to call it, and developing director, that's fine with me. But there's got to be a defined focus on increasing the population of Sunland Lake.
Yeah. It, it just, there's no, you can't keep, you can't keep having people work for you if you don't have any income.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been doing it because we, we take it out of funds that aren't supposed to be coming out of it.
If it hadn't been for the Sky, where we could get the seven million dollar reserve, we'd already be there.
Yeah.
And National Recreation Properties is, that, that was the developer, and that, as far as our reserves go, that's exactly why we have reserves.
Yeah, I know.
And we, and we ended up paying cash for amenities such as the clubhouse and this pool here.
Yeah.
And they paid off debt in the district. I know that goes back.
Yeah.
Many years, but, but NRP was the significant, was the last significant developer here in the district.
Yeah.
I threw mud in the water.
Yeah, well, no.
Yeah.
Tanya, how did we get them here? I mean, so many brought them here.
Do you know how they, how we, how we got them here?
I have no idea how we got them.
I don't know how we got them here.
I think Bud told me that he was involved in getting them here.
And, and the bottom line is if it hadn't been for the real estate collapse, they might have still been here, but.
That's a true statement as well. That is a true statement.
So.
Well, I, I just think him bringing it up, we, we need to do something and not wait another. If we're going to spend seventy-five thousand dollars, I'd like to try something different, see if that fails or does good. I mean.
Right. Contact a headhunter, find out.
I can put together something on the development.
Somebody like that would run us. Are they still in business?
Uh-uh.
Are they still in business, Tanya?
Headhunters?
No.
No, National Resorts.
Oh, National.
Probably not.
I don't think so.
I mean, if they made money here, they may want to come back.
They probably lost money here.
And, and Tanya, Tanya and I talked, with our meeting, just to throw this out, I mean, I, I would be in favor of looking at a stay and play sometime, just because we, we need places, we can't, you can't rent a place in Sunland Lake in winter. There is no places to do that. But the stay and play wouldn't be to rent them like Edgewater and the other, but we need, that might help, and I'd be willing to, you know, try something like that if the group wanted, but I know, I know four people that didn't come down and stay in Sunland Lake because they couldn't find a place last year. I mean, so it's, we need to be aggressive and try to get somebody to.
And that's, that's just another avenue to doing the same, you know, get the, you really don't understand Sunland Lake until you get here.
Yeah.
And you become part of it for a certain length of time. They talked about, I, the groups here provide this fellowship and the camaraderie that is second to none. That's what draws and keeps you here, I believe. So, but I, I really would like to see what you could find out, you know, what, what is that kind of cost? Is there, is there available units here for rent that we could?
Not a lot.
Huh?
There isn't.
There isn't?
I think it's, it's been full most of the summer on Edgewater. Have you noticed? I mean, I've noticed it.
There's some lots, there are.
I mean, we can.
Units for sale.
There are some units for sale. But you want me to try to find out if there's units for rent?
Yeah, I can swear us has got some available, how much they are. Now, maybe that's a place where I'd be willing to think about a loan.
And I know we have, where the cart barn is, we could build something nice there, stay and play. You know, so.
And keep them captive right here where they have to use the.
But what we get, we get is people wanting to rent them for five months.
Yeah, well, I know that.
That's not what we would do.
No, but we also need somebody that might buy some rental units, I think.
Okay. I said my dues. Done screwed everything.
You done messed everything up.
Man, man, man.
We could go on for hours.
That's what I'm here for.
Trying to figure, yeah, trying to figure out a solution to this, but. So just to go through like forty-three, go through the revenues and some of the changes that we did in the general fund. Page forty-three shows the revenues. There was a fifty thousand dollar increase. Obviously, that increase is from the membership rate change, so it went from forty-eight five up to a hundred thousand. Other than that, there were small tweaks here and there, just based off new trends and new forecasts.
What page you on?
Page forty-three.
Okay.
And then you see at the bottom, the transfer in necessary to balance this budget is the one eighty-five that we mentioned in the past. That is a reduction from the two sixty-five and three forty-four to ten needed from reserves in the first proposal. Do we want to discuss, I know that they mentioned the recreation rates and how aggressive the increase was. I spoke to both of those residents a little bit, and I kind of explained, you know, you see the increase, but they didn't know the context behind it, that that included a part-time bracket club attendant to provide service to them, to clean off the courts, to help with the wind screens being put up, and that kind of gave them some more context as to why it was such a substantial increase. And then we also broke it down into monthly costs where they're paying five dollars a month now and it's going to ten dollars a month. So when you put a two hundred percent increase, it sounds like a lot of money, but really it's five dollars a month for unlimited play at each facility. So.
You got away with murder for a long time.
It kind of helped put some context behind the conversation as to why and how we got to that number. You know, I think the, the conversation of why it wasn't gradually increased kind of came up a little bit, but we're, you know, obviously, we don't want to increase it if we don't have to, but I think there's a level of service and expectation that they want. In order to meet that, we need some sort of increase to, to take place, so. Are we still in, do we want to revisit the number, or?
I, I would be inclined to, as much as I think I, my, my first inclination would be to just bite the bullet, get it up there and see where the fallout is. I'd at least like to discuss what the rest of the board thinks about doing it in two steps, and obviously, next year's board could change that again, but, you know, increase it by half this year and plan to increase it half the next year. See if that's a little easier to swallow. It may be that, you know, increasing it half is still going to cost us memberships. We just don't know. I mean, in, in my mind, it's a reasonable rate, but I, I do understand the concerns about the huge increase percentage-wise.
I think they've got to pay their fair share, just like we're paying everybody else, and I realize half would be something, but when you're talking a five dollar to a ten dollar a month rate for something that they've been, you know, they couldn't go anywhere to get a swimming pool for five bucks a month.
Yeah. And I think that was one of the other points that I mentioned, and then they asked about the golf membership, and I said, well, one percent golf membership is a hundred and, hundred dollars, where yours is sixty cents. Like, you can't use that correlation. It's not the same across the board, so.
I'm all for going full bore.
With the memberships this year going up a hundred and thirty dollars and this going up sixty.
Yep.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
What recommendations you got, what people helping, more, more people, we got to do it.
Okay. So page forty-four is the admin department. In this department, I actually cut, well, we were recommended to cut twenty-five thousand from the foreclosure line. This year, obviously, we slowed down a lot and haven't pushed as much foreclosure with the county and the system being down, so we're only projecting to spend about forty thousand. In the past, we spent from sixty all the way up to a hundred thousand. We were really aggressive and really trying to go after them. I think that we can keep that number and still be aggressive with fifty-five thousand if we proceed with implementing the, you know, full payment collection policy in place. I think that'll give us an easier avenue to go after them as far as timing. We'll either collect all the proceeds all at once versus partials. I just think it'll be a lot easier and easier to go after and kind of keep people on a track. I think once you give some people some free rein, they kind of take advantage of that, and it's hard to get them ever back caught up because of the timing and the schedule. So that, that is a proposal. If we don't go down that path, then that may, that number may need to go up, but I, I feel comfortable with the fifty-five if we proceed down that path. Any questions on the changes in this department?
Nope.
Okay. Community services also went down quite a bit. Obviously, we removed twenty grand from the marketing, advertising and marketing budget. It was at seventy-five. We've dropped that to fifty-five, and I believe Ariel provided a, like, itemized breakdown of what that fifty-five thousand dollar covers. There was also the proposal of possibly including the twenty thousand dollar savings as a function for the Advent Health sponsorship. I know that we really haven't come to a full decision on that, so that's an item for discussion. We can leave it at seventy-five and include Advent Health, or just keep it at the fifty-five at the board's discretion. Do we want to discuss that now, or we still want to think about it tomorrow?
Well, the, under this proposed budget, you've got a campaign design for twelve-five and a graphic design for twelve-five and advertising at twenty-five. This is for the marketing plan, and I, that's just not going to get us, you got the fifty thousand there, but what's it going to get us? I, I just don't, based on what we had before and what, I don't think that's getting us where we need to go.
Yeah.
So I, again, I'd like to hear, you know, what, if, if there is any development director, I don't know how much we could possibly afford, but we can't afford not to do something. But fifty thousand is not going to get us much, in my opinion. I think we tried it last year, and I was, I'm very disappointed in the results. As far as the twenty thousand for Advent Health, by going down to the two hundred thousand, what did we get? We got a name on one door.
The entry area.
In the lobby area.
And no other amen, no other benefits to the members. In fact, there's no, put differently, no member benefits, with the exception of the, they're going to have a bill, a facility down there that's very nice, that's going to be within driving distance of their golf carts, or, you know, it's going to be part of the neighborhood. But that's going to happen regardless of whether we give the two hundred thousand or not.
As far as the marketing and advertising, allow me time to review the Billy Casper Golf marketing. I think when you have, when we talk district and Billy Casper, I think there's a lot that we can do together, you know, as far as advertising golf and restaurant. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying primarily, I, I just want some time to look at what their campaign initiatives are on the marketing. And then for us, I mean, is, is it local? Probably a lot of it, when I say local, I, I mean State of Florida. I know with WDM, we did focus on, you know, outside of Florida, but there's no measurable information that that worked at all. So our campaign is also built around local, which would be State of Florida as well. So I do need some time to take a look at what BCG has put in front of us yesterday, and then we'll, I, we can come back and discuss that, because their dollars are much smaller than what we have in our budget. I say much, maybe thirty or forty thousand, I think I'm correct in that statement. So, so we have some work to do.
The newsletter that gets, comes with our water bill, the glossy. What, what do we pay for that a month? You know?
It's nine hundred, ninety dollars a month.
Fifteen hundred? How much?
Nine ninety. So we pay about a thousand dollars a month for the newsletter.
Thousand dollars?
Okay, a thousand dollars.
To print that many, because we print for every single utility bill. There's probably thirty-seven hundred total utility bills that get stuffed in there, so.
What if we didn't use glossy?
Glossy? Like the format?
High-quality paper that we're using versus.
I don't know.
A little newspaper article. A little newspaper article.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we could create our own, you know, publisher and print it down our, our printer. There would be a cost for, you know, per print. Uh, let's say it's sixty-five cents times thirty-six hundred. It would just be less quality, so thirty-seven hundred times sixty-five. I don't know. That's a good number. I guess.
I don't know. I can find out. I can see if there's a price difference.
It's got to be like ten cents per color, so that's three hundred and seventy dollars at ten cents.
Yeah, I
I can check into that.
I personally don't get a lot out of it. Now, that doesn't mean that other people don't. I just personally don't see much value to it. I think it could be done a whole lot differently.
When you say it's nine ninety, is that the net? Because we sell some advertising in that.
So the total advertising dollars on page forty-three under newsletter advertisement, we've collected about three grand consistently. So we spent twelve to get three.
Total. That's total.
Total.
Total, total.
And it costs us twelve thousand to print.
Correct.
So what we're doing, some initiatives is looking at additional sponsorships. Um, some of the ideas that I have for our newsletter, I've talked with Ariel about, about maybe um, a spotlight on an employee one particular month, maybe spotlight on the supervisor, spotlight on our projects, spotlight on the restaurant, you know, for having specials, or if we can get that information in far enough in advance that we can also advertise to the community, because the community is not seeing things that we're doing in the restaurant necessarily, unless it's coming from an e-blast or a newsletter. If you think about it, because if it's just the membership getting that information, um, we need to do a better job in promoting our amenities to our community. And so that's something I'm going to be working on with her. But we can find out pricing. I mean, yeah, it is quite, quite a bit of gloss and color. I mean, that's.
It's top-quality paper.
Mm-hmm.
I don't need, I don't know that it needs to be.
Okay. We can check on that.
So based on that, I'm, I'm going to proceed with the fifty-five, no Advent Health, and then we'll, we'll get some better figures on the fifty-five, what that encompasses. Page forty-six, recreation. Once again, this includes a new recreation attendant, so that did go up twenty grand to cover that other employee.
There's no other way of getting that done
Sir?
without this part-time employee custodian.
What was that?
Isn't there some other way of getting that done, some other way this part-time custodian? We can't pick that up someplace from another department.
We've tried so for the last, what have been two or three years, golf, and golf employees actually been doing it in the morning. Um, which has had its challenges and obstacles with, once again, it's a BCG employee who doesn't report to us, and then it's a recreation under Ariel. So there's been some conflict and some just communication barriers there. Um, as far as that, I don't know that we could accommodate that.
That person would also handle other maintenance, not just racket club. I mean, over here as well.
Does the maintenance work?
Well, I would say maintenance, but I mean, at, over at the racket club, they would be handling wind screens, handling the courts, and there are um, other, other duties over here that we, because of COVID, we're, we're definitely changing the way that we sanitize our pool equipment, and, and there's a, there's a lot that we uh, want to do for the safety of our, our members for sure. So that person would also assist in, in other things. It wouldn't just be racket club. But we could definitely, you know, look at possibility of a district, another district maintenance person ha- trying to handle some of that. I mean, my, that was something that Mike and I would have to discuss.
Okay, that's another twenty thousand that's available.
Well, we're doing it, we're doing it now. It's just that we take a little time off from someone else. But if you want us to do it, we could probably still continue doing it. It's just that, you know, scheduling, that's all.
What won't get done by doing that? Am I robbing Peter to pay Paul, and we're going to have to do something else someplace else?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can do it. It's actually my, I don't know, my opinion, I, I, I think it would be better off to have our guy to do it, because we have a maintenance guy. His name is Chewie. He does everything. Uh, you know, he does all the maintenance. He's very thorough. He follows up. He keeps uh, you know, his PM work is, is, is really done well. Uh, right now, we're, we're um, we're cleaning the area now, first thing in the morning, and so it's just timed.
Y'all, your staff comes in at seven, is that right?
Yeah, my guys come in.
All they, all the person does is just blow it off the courts, right?
Exactly.
Currently? Okay.
And then what we, well, then, and then we come over here and, and power wash the, the seats at the, well, now we do because there's been going on. Uh, you know, so uh, I mean, we could still handle that.
Is it suffering someplace else?
Yeah.
Are you suffering someplace else because of that?
No, not real, well, I mean, you know, cutting grass.
You're always asking for new employees, more employees.
I'm not asking.
And now you're giving them away.
I'm doing the work. We're doing the work. What are you going to tell you?
I know, but you already have other projects that you need to get to.
It's not Chewie though, that's, we're not talking about Chewie.
No, no, well, that's our maintenance guy. If we got to cut, cut a little, you know, to save some, we can handle it, yes. You know, but to put it on the door. In the past, I'm, I'm totally was done, done by Georgia's guys anyways. You know, they also set up, they helped, uh, Chrissy set this up. I mean, you know, just keeps, it keeps a little more busier, you know? You know, so, I mean, we could do it, yes. If you want to cut that.
Well, I think it's an area that we need to look at. If we can, if you feel comfortable that it can be done that way, then let's do it. If we can't, then come back with it still in there.
We can do that.
I'm looking for money for that director.
Does, sorry, guys.
That's okay.
Does Ariel have a budget for the pickleball in that area and the tennis? Is there a budget?
It's inside the recreational services department. It's all incorporated in the same budget.
And, and if there's something that's broke there, do they go through Ariel to get it fixed?
I, I think it depends on the level of what's broke. You know, if we, if it's something that Chewie or some, one of our staff can get involved in, we certainly can do that. If it's lights out or other things, but yes, it would be Kelly and Ariel communicating. If they need Mike or our staff to handle uh, something that, it could be a gate broken or, or something, then that's definitely something that they would communicate with Mike and our staff would help. Yes, sir.
Couple people said something that some little things were not fixed.
But if we don't get it communicated to staff, they gotta tell somebody. Yes, sir.
No other major changes on the recreation. Page forty-seven, finance. We actually cut two thousand dollars. We had some savings in the life and health insurance uh, aspect. We had an employee who decided to opt out. So we made that adjustment there. Page forty-eight, code enforcement.
Well, you didn't last talk long about your section, did you?
I don't have much change, man. I
Two thousand dollars.
I got all, I got all the boring stuff.
You got to have something in there for me.
Of course, he writes it down.
Real estate taxes and postage.
Get them, get the licking stamps, they're cheaper.
I can't believe postage.
Uh, code enforcement, uh, two thousand dollar, over twenty-five hundred dollars. We actually removed the merit increase in that department, which is the only change in that category. Page forty-nine, public safety, four thousand dollar difference in that department, and that is from we reduced the gas and oil, get it more in line with um, recent averages. So we've dropped it down thirteen-five from the fifteen. And then we dropped a few, a, a little bit of repair and maintenance, as the truck's brand new this year, so we don't expect a lot of repair and maintenance in that department for this first, first year. Page fifty, uh, six thousand dollar reduction. Comes two thousand from salaries and wages due to merit increases removed. Uh, life and health insurance went down a thousand. Chemicals, we, we got more in line as well. We dropped it to fifteen based on the estimate this year is about thirteen. Last year, we were at twenty-one, so I think we're starting to even that out a little bit. So fifteen, we felt like that was a better number to budget going forward. Um, so that was a six thousand dollar decrease in that department from budget number one. Roads and drainage maintenance went down eleven thousand. Looks like four thousand dollars came out of merit increases in that department. Health insurance went down two grand, and then utility streetlights, just based on averages in the past, we've been coming in under just around fifty grand, so we're right at sixty. So we, we went ahead and budgeted at sixty-five versus a seventy, so we reduced that by five to get it more in line. And then we kept dr- roads and maintenance and drainage, uh, two hundred and three fifty respectively. Lastly, equipment and vehicle maintenance, a thousand dollar reduction was just uh, just some small tweaks on health insurance and that's it, really. Hopefully by next, we are meeting with the Highlands County Insurance Committee meeting in July. Um, at that point right now, for budget purposes, I have a one and a half percent forecasted increase to health insurance costs. I don't know that that's going to be the number. Um, but by July, I should have a firm number of what the renewal rate will be, and then I'll have to make any adjustments at that time. If it comes back to be a three percent, then it's going to make a little bit of an impact in that department, so. I'm forecasting one and a half percent. We are trending better than we have in the past, so I'm hoping there's not a big jump, but COVID and everything else going on may affect some of the insurance liability numbers. Page, page fifty-three shows the capital. We left in the seventy-five hundred for admin for the server upgrades. We did remove the bocce ball project until further notice, and then we reduced the roads and drainage capital from one fifty to one thirty. As we discussed last time, removing the golf, uh, I mean, the John Deere gators. And then golf went up from three thirty-seven to four twenty-seven. Um, so a net reduction of about sixty thousand dollars there. That pretty much rounds out the general fund. Page fifty-five shows our five-year capital projection. Um, we did remove, once again, we did remove all the recreation projects. We did remove the pool at one point five million, and then we did remove the district office renovation with the meeting room for five hundred thousand for the time being. Any other questions on general fund? Utilities hasn't really changed much from budget to budget. Once again, we've discussed, we're not proposing any rate increase this year. Um, we also aren't proposing any new fees on the rate schedule, which is page fifty-nine. We still do twenty-dollar turn-on, turn-off for, for new services, fifty dollars after hours. Um, you know, if we have to replace a pump, which I'm sure you guys have all heard of, it's four hundred dollars for a new pump replacement. That comes with a one-year warranty, so that's been kind of the norm for the last couple of years, so we're not proposing any changes to that. Page sixty gives you a, an average comparison of all the inside city limit water rates. So currently, we're at forty-five dollars and forty cents, based on four thousand gallons of consumption. The inside city limit averages is forty-eight fifty, so um, like if you look at Avon Park, we're about a dollar more expensive than Avon Park inside city limits. We're about four dollars more expensive than City of Sebring inside city limits. Lake Placid is actually fifteen dollars higher than we are. So the net effect of those averages are about, so we're kind of right in the middle of all, all the municipalities as far as what we're charging now for our water, water services. Going to page sixty-one, there was a forty thousand dollar increase in projected um, budgeted revenues. The majority of that coming from sewer sales, and I did uh, forecast a larger interest income projection. I kind of went conservative the first round based off all the cuts that we had with the prime rate going down. I see that going back up here shortly, and it's kind of been maintaining, so I did increase that back to fifty-five, whereas where we left off this year. So I feel like that's a conservative number. So those are the two changes that caused that forty thousand dollar increase. The customer service department uh, went down two grand. That was a health insurance savings. And then operations went down twenty thousand dollars, which is on page sixty-five and sixty-six. We were able to save seventeen thousand dollars in life and health insurance. Now, that was on, that was based off our current employees with health insurance. We had one employee who decided not to get health insurance. I guess that employee is no longer with us, so now we're going to have to replace them, and they may jump back on, so that number may go back up, that seventeen grand, so uh, this is kind of a moving target, and as we hire someone else, we'll kind of see what, what that transpires to. Um, other than that, in repairs and maintenance, we really didn't see any major changes. We test, we, we adjusted testing in sewer. Five thousand dollars down, just based off prior year history. We felt like thirty thousand dollars was just a little bit too high, so we did decrease that by five thousand. Um, and that's it really for that department. So page sixty-seven shows us the net reserves. So right now, to balance this budget, we do have an excess of three eighty-five coming into here. I had that going into the
Hold up one minute.
Go ahead.
On these uh, the metered, and I think we probably talked about this, but I don't remember. The metered and low-pressure pumps.
Correct. So that
We had thirty-five thousand in this estimated actual this year, but we're going to go to sixty-two thousand.
Right. So that includes, and that is all offset by revenue. So everything that goes out of that, it's either new meters for like Southern Homes Hornick that they're paying for in advance, as well as the floats for four hundred. So those are revenue line item that's offsetting that sixty-two thousand dollars. But we're just projecting, as Southern Homes continues to build more, we're having to replace more meters, and we're going to charge more meters to that line item. And then pump, pump float failures as well. So we're just trying to account for the, the increase in, in demand that we're having. Page sixty-seven shows the one eighty-five that we're transferring out to the general fund to balance that, three eighty-five for savings at the moment, unless we allocate that somewhere else. And then three hundred ninety-two thousand for capital improvements, which is the smoke test of one twenty-five, lift station rehab seventy-five, high-service pump seventy-five, interconnect automatic valve forty-five thousand, and then equipment for seventy-two thousand. I know Mike's still working on page sixty-nine on the capital five-year. We're still working with um, trying to assess the asbestos lines, whether we should try and, you know, whether we'll be able to find grant funding to do it all in one year, or whether we're going to have to stagger that out. Um, so at the time being, we still have it staggered until we can get a better assessment of that. We did remove one item, which is the wastewater treatment plant interconnect, um, and that's four hundred thousand dollars. We just don't feel like that's going to be a feasible or effective option. You know, by the time we go to interconnect those two, unit twenty-three plant will probably be need to be replaced or repaired by that time, so there will be no point in connecting those two at that, at that point.
The, the idea that's been presented is to redirect the flow possibly of Advent Health and of Sunning Lake Elementary School to the unit four plant as an idea to alleviate some of the flow on the unit twenty-three plant. Um, in fact, the unit four plant is actually closer to both of those entities, you know, than, than the unit twenty-three, but uh, of course, there's, there would be cost in that, you know, lift stations and other things, so.
Yeah.
Just as a discussion, but we don't have that incorporated here yet.
And I'm thinking that would be almost a necessity if we get somebody to do something with unit twelve.
Yes, or whatever's agreed upon. I agree. Or we might have to build new, who knows? Who knows what kind of development that we will have there, so.
So I think that's, that's all of them. Um, obviously, some of these numbers are going to change by the next, next workshop. We won't be at a three eighty-five excess, we'll be somewhere lower. My guess is we'll probably be close to balanced, depending on how much golf comes back with and some of those changes. It'll be interesting to see how we decide to tackle some of those major projects. Being at a balanced budget year over year with no, no major savings, we still have some difficult, you know, challenges as far as finding more revenue sources or cutting on, cutting where we can without affecting service and quality, so.
Which goes to the bigger question is finding a way to increase the revenue, so.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I'm going to try to say something. What, what are we doing with the the two hundred thousand for Advent? I'm going to try to say something, what are, what are we doing with the 200,000 for Advent Health, I heard, I didn't understand. What are we doing?
So, at Advent Health, I'm just, as a, as an idea of a sponsorship, if, if we were to commit or pledge $200,000, they would allow that over a 10-year period, which would be $20,000 per year that we would need to incorporate in our budget. Again, that is, that would be a facility that we would be able to market as part of our community, you know, of bringing people here. And so, it'd be 20,000, which was part of the original proposal that Mr. Branson had presented to the board as an idea. So, we very, very easily can incorporate that in our, in our budget on a yearly basis over the next 10 years.
And so, we're going to do that?
The current budget does not have it in it.
That'll be up to the board. Well, currently, currently, it's not, but, I mean...
Any other questions from the board? Looks like everybody's packed up, ready to go. Anything else you want us to hear?
I, I can't think of anything.
We're closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.